It being six o'clock, I'm calling to order the Select Board meeting of June 2nd, 2025. If you'd join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. This meeting is being telecast live by Chelmsford Telemedia and being recorded for later viewing by the public. And first we'll do public service announcements.
Okay, thank you Erin. So we'll start with the Health Department, and there's always lots of news coming out of the Health Department every meeting. So Sharps disposal, June 9th, 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM. Where? Chelmsford Health Department. Details, residents of Chelmsford can drop off their sharps in an approved hard plastic container. Registration is not required, but you must show proof of residency. They have a walking group, and the dates for that are June 10th and 24th, 9:00 AM to 9:30. Meet at the 110 baseball fields. Join them as they walk on the Bruce Freeman Rail Trail. This is a great way to get in your 30 minutes of exercise, socialize, and learn about some interesting health topics. Please wear comfortable and weather appropriate clothes and bring water. All ages and fitness levels are welcome. They do not meet in inclement weather. Sober karaoke on June 13th, from 7:00 to 10:00 PM at the Chelmsford Center for the Arts. Join them for some sober, free fun, and free pizza. There's knockin' training on June 25th, 3:00 PM to 3:30 at the Chelmsford Town Hall, Room Lower Level 06. And that's all the information on that. Community CPR, June 17th, 3:00 PM to 7:00 PM, Chelmsford Town Hall. Join the Health Department for a comprehensive four-hour training session where you'll master CPR techniques for adults, children, and infants. You'll also learn how to respond to choking emergencies, understand AED basics, and cover essential first aid procedures. Every participant will receive the American Heart Association's Heart Saver CPR AED First Aid Certificate, valid for two years. Don't miss the opportunity to gain vital life-saving skills. The cost of the class is $20, and it looks like you need to pre-register. Community CPR for the youth, June 26th, 12 to 4, Chelmsford Town Hall. Join the Health Department for a comprehensive four-hour training session where they'll master CPR techniques for adults, children, and infants. You'll also learn how to respond to choking, understanding AED basics, and so on. Every participant will receive the American Heart Association's Heart Saver CPR AED First Aid Certificate, which is valid for two years. Again, don't miss the opportunity to gain vital life-saving skills. Cost of the class is $20, and you need to pre-register. Moving along on the Health Department business, blood pressure screenings. Couple of different dates, June 5th from 9:00 to 12:00 PM, Chelmsford Health Department. June 26th from 8:30 to 10:30 at the Chelmsford Senior Center. Drop by the Health Department office located in Chelmsford Town Hall, or at the Senior Center for a free blood pressure screening. Registration is not required. They also are involved with the Massachusetts Behavioral Health Helpline. Details are that it's a free confidential service available 24/7, 365 days a year. It connects individuals and families to mental health and substance use treatment services across Massachusetts. You can call or text (833) 773-2445, or chat online at masshelpline.com. The group offers real-time support, initial clinical assessment, and connection to appropriate care regardless of insurance status. In the employee spotlight for the Health Department, the Chelmsford Health Department is proud to welcome Alyssa as their new Public Health Social Worker. She'll be joining them the first week of June and brings with her a strong background in both social work and public health. She's excited to support Chelmsford residents with a wide range of needs and will be a valuable asset to the department and the community. Please join them in giving Alyssa a warm welcome. And Chelmsford Health Department's Fall Festival on September 27th. That'll be from 11:00 AM to 4:00 PM. We are still, or they are still accepting sponsors and vendors for the annual Fall Festival. They expect more than 3,000 attendees this year, food trucks, and free activities such as face painting, balloonists, petting zoo, hayrides, pumpkin painting, and much, much more. And what they've been up to lately is they're involved with the Massachusetts Alliance of Public Health Nurses Conference. Public Health Nurse Darcy Beal recently helped plan and attended the 2025 Massachusetts Association of Public Health Nurses Conference. The event featured expert speakers including Dr. Christine Hernan, Emergency Physician and Medical Toxicologist, Dr. Stephanie Shalupka of Worcester State University, Dr. Dylan Tanny from the Bureau of Infectious Disease, and Dr. Todd Eller, Director of Infectious Disease at South Shore Hospital. Darcy's involvement reflects her leadership and commitment to advancing public health in the community. Way to go, Darcy. Okay, and if you need to contact the Health Department for any reason, you can reach them at (978) 250-5241, or tangel@chelmsfordmass.gov. Town of Chelmsford, 2025 Independence Day Program. Okay, so Thursday, July 3rd, from 3:00 to 9:00 PM is the Arts Festival. That'll be held at the, sponsored by the Chelmsford Arts Society, and will be held at the Center for the Arts. From 5:00 to 9:00 PM, the Country Fair, sponsored by the Chelmsford Lions Club, is at the Center Common. From 5:00 to 8:00 PM, there'll be kitty train rides, sponsored by Chelmsford Rotary Club, and those will be at the Rare of the Public Gardens. 7:00 to 8:30, there'll be a band concert, and that's going to be put on by the Chelmsford Community Band, and that will be at the Center Common. On Friday, July 4th, at 8:00 AM-
Pat, if I could interrupt you for one second-
Sure.
-on Thursday, from 5:00 to 7:00, we're having Julie Martin and a country music band, with musicians from Nashville also performing. And then during their break, the Suburbanettes will do their show in between sets of the country band. And then as soon as that's done, the community band will do their traditional 30 July concert.
Awesome. Thanks, Jeff. Okay, so on Friday, July 4th, at 8:00 AM, the Country Fair opens up, sponsored by the Chelmsford Lions Club, and that's on the Center Common. 8:30 AM, there's a flag raising by the Police and Fire Departments, and that will be held at the Center Common Flagpole. 8:30 to 1:00 PM is an Arts Festival, put on by the Chelmsford Arts Society, and that will be at the Center for the Arts. 9:30 AM is the annual John Carson Two Mile Road Race, and at 10:00 AM is the annual Independence Day Parade, which you'll see all of us at, I guess, if we're lucky. All right, a couple of proclamations. Town of Chelmsford proclamation concerning lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and queer Pride Month, June 2025. Whereas the Town of Chelmsford is a welcoming community in an exceptional place to live, learn, work, play, and raise a family. And whereas Chelmsford recognizes the importance of equality and freedom, and whereas the nation was founded upon and is guided by a set of principles that includes that every person has been created equal, that each has rights to their life, liberty, and pursuit of happiness, and that each shall be accorded the full recognition and protection of law. And whereas the Town of Chelmsford lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and queer community are a vital part of all fields and professions and contribute to a stronger community. And whereas the Town of Chelmsford is dedicated to fostering acceptance of all its citizens and preventing discrimination and bullying based on sexual orientation and gender identity. And whereas Chelmsford is strengthened by and thrives upon the rich diversity of ethnic, cultural, racial, gender, and sexual identities of all its residents, all of which contribute to the vibrant character of our town. And whereas the Center for Disease Control recognizes that LGBTQ teens are all at higher risk to be the victims of violence and have increased suicide rates. And whereas it is imperative that young people in the community, regardless of sexual orientation or gender identity, feel valued, safe, empowered, and supported by their peers, educators, and community leaders. Now therefore, we, the Select Board, and on behalf of Town of Chelmsford, hereby proclaim and recognize June 2025 as Lesbian, Gay, Bisexual, Transgender, and Queer Pride Month in the Town of Chelmsford, and urge citizens to recognize and celebrate the contributions made by members of the LGBTQ community and to actively promote the principles of equality and liberty presented this second day of June 2025 by the Select Board. And another Town of Chelmsford proclamation in recognition of Flag Day on June 14th, 2025. Whereas the national flag is a symbol of our great country, our heritage, and our place in the world, and whereas the flag represents the highest ideals of individual liberty, justice, and equal opportunity for all, and whereas the flag is a precious possession deserving the reverence and respect of all Americans, and whereas the citizens of Chelmsford recognize the flag as a living thing emblematic of our great nation. Now therefore, we, the Chelmsford Select Board, do hereby recognize Friday, June 14th, 2025, as Flag Day, and demonstrate our support of the national flag at this ceremony today, presented this 14th day of June, which today isn't really the-
But I wanted to mention a couple of things on that. The reason it's presented this day is because I was invited to a couple of Flag Day ceremonies, and I always bring a proclamation-
Okay, perfect.
-and I just wanted to mention that they are public. First one, they're both on Saturday, June 14th, 2025, not Friday. Sorry, didn't catch that. First one is at 2:00 at the Garrison House. They always have a nice little ceremony there with refreshments afterwards. And then at 5:00 PM at the Chelmsford Lodge of Elks, again, a very, very nice ceremony about the history of the flag. So if anybody's interested, they're both open to the public.
Thank you, Pat. All right, the next item up for bid. Celebrate Juneteenth, a commemoration of freedom and unity, where on the Chelmsford Common, Saturday, June 28th, 11:00 AM to 3:00 PM. Check it out. There'll be local food vendors, music, keynote speakers, and performances, sponsored by Chelmsford Together Diversity Equity and Inclusion. For more information, please contact Chelmsford Diversity Equity and Inclusion Committee at www.chelmsfordmass.gov/854/diversityequityinclusioncommittee. Carly Connor-Ryme at, or C. Connor-Ryme@gmail.com.
It looks like there might be somebody here to talk about these, the next two. I don't know, maybe.
The flea market? I think the flea market is the next one. Sure.
All right, let me give a quick read, and then I'll turn it over to say a few things, Vivian. Okay, so Chelmsford will be sponsoring an outdoor flea market. Treasures await at the Garrison House, 105 Garrison Road, Chelmsford, Mass. Dates, June 28th, July 26th, and August 23rd. Vendor setup is from 8:00 to 9:00, and it opens to the public from 9:00 to 1:00. Vendor spaces are $25 for a 10 by 10 outdoor space. For one day, all three dates are $60. Cash or check payable to the Town of Chelmsford. Proceeds will benefit the Chelmsford Annual Holiday Prelude and Tree Lighting Celebration on December 7th, 2025. Free admission to the public, and vendors can contact Vivian at squekers601@yahoo.com, or (978) 973-9596 for space reservation and other questions. And with that, I will, Vivian, just say a few words about it.
Basically, what I'm trying to do with all the fundraising that we do is support the Holiday Prelude that's held in the first week of December. A lot of the funds we raise will be going to replace equipment that we need in case the lights break or things like that. Last year, we got really lucky, and everything worked. We were able to Frankenstein one little pole light, and all the snowflakes worked, and yay. If we can get a couple more years out of all that, that would be great, but when it comes time to replace them, there will be a cost, so we're just trying to build up a little nest egg, so we're ready for that. Plus, on the night of the event, we have a couple of events that do require funding. A lot of it, we find other sources for funding, but we still gotta pay for the DJ, and the town takes care of the stage, and the horse and wagon is probably gonna be over $2,000 this year. So anything we can do to help pay the bills is great. And I also have another one that you'll probably talk about next, and we'll let you run with it.
Oh, yep. So the Holiday Decorating Committee are sponsoring a calendar raffle for the month of August. Proceeds will benefit the annual Holiday Prelude and Tree Lighting Event, being held on December 7th, 2025. Still a few spaces left for sponsorships, and calendars are $10 each. Calendars will be available at the Treasurer Collector's Office in June and July. And thank you for supporting the Holiday Prelude, and again, get in touch with Vivian if you need more information.
The only other thing I got to add to that is tickets are now available at the Collector's Office. We'd like to thank them for all the help they give me with that, because it's a nice outlet. People like to come to town offices, and they all have the tickets there. I'm trying to get additional locations to sell tickets. I don't have any yet. So if you're a small business owner and you get a lot of foot traffic, by all means, give me a call or an email, and I could set you up with a collection bin and some tickets and things like that. And there was something else I was gonna say about it. I can't remember right now, but it'll come to me. It's okay. Any questions? Like I said, give me a call or an email, and life is good.
And I'm sure we'll be hearing from you again before the end of the summer and by the Prelude itself.
Gift that keeps giving. All right.
I know. Thanks, Vivian.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Our final notice tonight is a notice of a special town meeting to be held Monday, June 23rd, 2025, at 7:30 PM at the Chelmsford Senior Center at 75 Groton Road. A special town meeting will convene at 7:30 PM on Monday, June 23rd, at the Senior Center at 75 Groton Road. A copy of the special town meeting warrant is available now on the town's website. Any resident of the town who is not an elected town meeting member may attend sessions of the town meeting and participate in question and answer and discussion portions of the proceedings. Links to the town meeting presentation document in the Finance Committee's warrant book will be found on the town meeting webpage at least one week prior to town meeting. And that's it, Madam Chair.
Great. Thanks, Pat. Next up, we have general public input. So I don't know if we have anyone here for Pat Maloney on Zoom. Okay, next, committee vacancies.
I'm glad this is a short list. Committee vacancies as of June 2nd, 2025. Agricultural Commission has one unexpired three-year term ending on June 30th, 2026. Commission on Disabilities has one unexpired three-year term ending on June 30, 2025, one unexpired three-year term ending on June 30, 2026, and two three-year terms ending on June 30, 2027. Council on Aging Board has one unexpired three-year term ending June 30, 2025. Historic District Commission Alternate Member has one three-year term ending June 30, 2027. Historical Commission has one unexpired three-year term ending June 30, 2026. Holiday Decorating Committee has two unexpired one-year terms ending December 31st, 2025. And the Parade Committee welcomes all applicants to one-year terms, and this year's term ends on July 31st, 2025. If you're interested in serving on the Town Board or Committee, please complete an online application available at the town website. For more information, please contact the Town Manager's Office at (978) 250-5202, or tmoffice@chelmsfordmass.gov.
Thanks, Pat. Okay, next on our agenda, we have licenses, and it looks like we only have one here. It is a one-day all-alcoholic beverage license for the American Legion at 90 Groton Road. Do we have someone here from the Legion? Welcome back. You guys are busy up there.
Good evening. I'm Phil Hamilton, Senior Commander of the American Legion in North Chelmsford. As we are looking for a one-day permit for our block party, public is invited. Outdoor cooking, outdoor music, planned to block the roads from Groton Road to the Legion property, no drive-through there, but same as every year.
Al Ritchill, General Manager of the American Legion. More or less the same what he just said.
I remember this from last year. Does anybody have any questions or concerns?
They've been doing this for a few years now.
Yeah, how many years you been doing this now?
Every year. This year, I want to go. Okay, I'll take a motion then.
Okay, motion to approve the application for a one-day all-alcoholic beverage license for the block party to be held June 7th, 2025, at the parking lot of the American Legion at 90 Groton Road and across Willis Drive.
Second? Can I get a second?
I'll second it.
All right, and we do not need to do a roll call vote, because we have Pat Maloney in person, so I'll just do a once-over. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? Okay. All set. Thank you. Good luck.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
Okay, next up, we have reports and presentations. Hi, Darlene. First, we have Darlene Luciar, Town of Cowan.
Evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. Give me an update on where we are for our revenues for fiscal '25 in expenditures. Can't believe that the year is over, or almost over. Just, this is it, going into the last month. The revenue I'm gonna be talking to though is actually through April 30th. We didn't have any revenues posted for May for me to give you a final report. So these numbers here, the revenue numbers are through April 30th, but the expenditures I'm giving you, the expenditure report I gave you actually ran through that first weekend, through the middle of May, because we ran the warrants through there. I could give you those numbers. But just talking about the revenues collected through April, we're at 91.7% of our collection rate of our $162 million. That's great, because it's really our benchmark number would be like 85%. So we've exceeded our benchmark number there for total revenues. Local receipts, though, our largest line item in the local receipts is motor vehicle excise. The collection is 92.8% of our $5.9 million. That's very good. To date, we've collected the $5.4 million. Year-to-date, our fiscal '25 commitments are running a little bit higher than our fiscal '24, about $25,000 than fiscal '24. We do have one more commitment that was expected in May, and so I don't see any reason that we're gonna not hit that $5.9 million. We should actually exceed that number, our budget number, so that'll be, that helps out on the bottom line for our local receipts. The other items that we look at is our local meals tax and room tax. On the local options, meals tax revenue distribution for third quarter was $231,777. This is a little bit of an increase, just a little under $3,000 from the same period of time last year. Year-to-date meal tax revenue for all three quarters actually are down versus what we were in '24. So unless the meals tax really, the revenue weakens further, we should, though, still be able to make our number of the $850,000. So I don't think, and even though we're running a little bit behind from last year, I don't see any problem why we won't hit the number that we budgeted for. In our hotel rooms tax revenue for all three quarters, total $483,000. This is like a 4% increase from our prior year. We've already collected almost all of our budgeted amount, about 97% of our $500,000 for room tax there. So what we're kind of losing out on the meals tax, we're kind of gaining on the room tax, so it's kind of balancing that out. Fines and fees, both of those line items are exceeding the current year's budget amounts. We did have a fee struck. We had the departments look at their fees and fine structures. Some of the departments did increase some of their fees, so I think this is where we're seeing that has helped, even though we didn't increase them largely. But the amount that we did increase them is helping out with these numbers. So they both, like I said, the fines have exceeded the budget just by, just a little under $1,000. Like I said, and the towns have, the departments have looked at their fee structure, so we did increase some of the department's numbers. Building permit, that's another large number that's in our local revenues. It's actually declined from a year ago, but in fiscal '24, we did have that lodge permit that came in for 225 Princeton Street. And this year, we're just not seeing any lodge projects that are on the books. We should be receiving those. David Harrison is gonna probably pull a permit before the end of the fiscal year for Smith Street, so that will help out the bottom line. We're only about 3% away from our number for the $1.6 million, so we really don't see any issues with not hitting that number. We just won't have, last year, we had like over $1 million because of that lodge permit from Princeton Street. But this year, we'll be able to either meet the number or go over a little bit of that number once we see that permit come in from David Harrison. Interest earnings, this line item is doing great. We're actually 40% over what we were the period last year. This is really due to a strong bond market, and we've exceeded our $450,000 by over $500,000. We've exceeded that number. So hoping the bond market stays strong for the next month, and that's really gonna help out our bottom line. And with that, that increase, that help with that bottom line, just to let you know, I'm not, don't quote me, just looking, we're gonna end this year in the black. I'm expecting at least $2.5 million for free cash, could be a little bit more. We haven't finished, revenues haven't closed, so I really haven't seen everything yet, but just kind of looking from where we were from last year to this year, we'll be able to have a nice free cash number. Real estate and property tax, always, we remain strong with collection rates there. We're at 94% of our collection rate. We usually, we don't collect it all, but we're usually at rate 98.9 or 99% collected by the end, by June 30th. So even though we're just, so revenues right now are slightly, a little slightly higher than the previous year of '24, but we are within our 85%. And again, like I said, we're gonna, we will have a positive position when we close off the books on June 30th for revenues. Any questions before I move on to expenditures and revenues? Expenditures. Okay, we say departments do a good job with their maintaining good budget and stay within their line item budgets. But, so we did, fiscal '25 budget expenditures remain on target with only one month remaining. I don't see any concerns in any of the department line items. At town meeting, though, we did approve and make an, approved and make an adjustment of about $347,000. That's just less than 0.2% of our budget from overall, and that came from the Reserve Fund, and those were for budget adjustments. They need to be due, because when they set the budget a year, like when we just set the budget now, things change. Departments need additional funding. They were just small, most of it was for public safety and general government is what those budgets were for. But I don't, I have no concerns with any of the departments. They're all within their benchmark number of 85%, so I don't see any issues there at all. all. Didn't need to bring to your attention. I'm just, I gave you some of the, some of the enterprise funds. I didn't do all of them. I just did kind of the larger ones, Sewer Enterprise, Stormwater. As you can see, we're at, to date, revenues exceeding their expenditure level, so they will be ending again, they'll be ending with a positive free cash number. Don't see any issues with, with any of the Sewer Enterprise. The revenues are staying, are coming in strong there, and they're staying within their expenditures. At this point, they actually have about a $745,000 positive, what would, I consider what they call a reserve, that would be what their, their undesignated amount or their free cash amount. Stormwater, same thing, their revenues are exceeding their expenditure amounts. Again, we're still, one month into, one more month for expending, but again, they should end the year in the black, too. They'll have a little bit of a free cash amount. The other accounts that I like to just show you is just all of our special revenue accounts, our COA lunch, our school lunch, all the revolving accounts that we have. We have some reserve and appropriations that are done at town meeting, other trust, our trust funds, and then other revenue donation accounts that are specific, for donating for a specific purpose. Looking at the COA lunch, they're always, their balances always are small. They don't, they don't carry a large balance there, they just, they run pretty nil, but they're doing fine there. They just, they have a small balance of $16,000. So they, revenues comes in, and then expenditure, they have to buy, buy some food in, under there, and they also have some salary costs in there. So it's, it really is not a money-making profit, they don't make a huge profit over there, but it's a nice little lunch program that they run. School lunch, on the other hand, they have a nice $3.5 million balance in their account. This, this may change a little bit next year, because what they're doing is, in the past years, they've been paying their salaries for their, for their school lunch out of their general fund. I think they're going to change that up and start taking salaries out of the school lunch program. So that will draw down on some of, on their large balance that they have in there. But at this point, that's, it's pretty hefty. Again, they, they taken a lot of money through the school lunch. They also get subsidized through the state for free lunch, because they have the free lunch program, so they also get a large state funding. Just some of the revolving accounts, as you can see, that we have, we have some insurance accounts, sales weights and measures, we have a dog revolving account, most of them are, we have daycare, transportation. This is where our circuit breaker money, the school's circuit breaker money, library has like a loss book account, just small, what we call revolving accounts, that money is collected, they're in there, they're used for, for those specific purposes. Under insurance, the town insurance accounts, those are if a town vehicle was in an accident, or a police car was in an accident, or a fire truck, these are where the, when we get the checks from the insurance companies, we deposit, we need to deposit them in here, and then we have the vehicle fixed, and the cost is, comes right, the money goes in and the money comes out for the cost. So those are, just some revolving accounts there. Under the childcare, the school department, out-of-town tuition, summer school. These are just some of what we consider call school choice and civic activities for revolving accounts. And they all have good balances, there's never, there's no deficits or anything there. Reserve for appropriation, those accounts, most of them are sewer bediments. Those are the things we, we vote at town meeting, we have to take out some of the sewer bediment and pay the debt for sewer. So those, these are what they call reserve appropriation, and these what you see on the, at town meeting. Cemetery's lots and sales, you see that, there'll be transfer money out of here to pay for some of the stuff over at the cemetery. And then other donations, these, these accounts are revenue and donations, they're basically donation accounts that are given by some, by an individual, but it's, has to be used per that specific. So I know, like, we have the Military Covenant and things like that, though, these are, they're donations, but they're used, they have to be used for a specific purpose. They're not just miscellaneous, can't be used for, for anything. They have to be used for what they've been set up to be used for. A lot of them are for planning board, we have, for traffic mitigations and things like that. And the account, those accounts, I monitor those accounts pretty closely, making sure that there's money in those accounts that when we have to pay out, that the money is there to pay out what they're, what they're used for. I have several of these accounts, there's a lot of them. Sale for cruisers, COA has a lot of it, it's just a lot of those donation accounts. We have the ATF, ATEF, that's for the arts technology, that's for the school, that's donated, that you can pay that, and when you pay your taxes, you can actually donate a little bit of money there. We have an athletic account and some gifted donations. And then the last thing is our trust accounts, and these are all under the custodial of our town treasurer. And you can see the list of all of our, we have our regular stabilization account, we have our affordability stabilization account, we have our construction, sewer construction stabilization account, there's also a new, a new school special education stabilization accounts, we have a couple of those stabilization accounts. Library has several trust accounts, one will be, John will be speaking about one after, after myself. And then cemetery has several trust accounts. And then the last one that we, that's under the trust account is, of course, our OPEB, where that money is invested under the R OPEB, and you can see how with the balance there and the, the money come, we're doing, again, the rate of return on there is very good. Get about $2.6 million a year of money coming in. Then there's a $28 million balance in that account. So all the accounts there look good. I don't have any issues. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them. '25 looks like it's going to be good. We'll see what happens moving forward into fiscal '26, but we'll end '25 strong, and we'll have a good free cash amount.
Does anyone have any questions? Can I, can I ask a question, Ashley? What's going on with the Best Western? I'm just curious about the hotel, the occupancy tax, what we kind of, if we see any impact there, because that's a good chunk, and I know that at one point, it wasn't going to be funded anymore and might not be full, and I don't know what's going on, actually.
The governor has announced that she'll be, be ending the sheltering program in hotels this summer, probably by the end of this month. And so that we expect that that will result in a decline in our hotel rooms occupancy tax. So what may help offset a little bit of that is that the former Radisson Hotel is scheduled to open later this month, and that I would expect that probably the Best Western, the former Best Western will probably be undergoing some renovations once, you know, all the sheltering is completed, and then hopefully they'll reopen, you know, in the near future, because not only is that vacant, but as you know, the former Moonstone's in front of it, which is all one parcel, is also vacant. So we'll look to see what the property owner does at that site. But yeah, we are, we are cautious in, in where we budget for the upcoming year, but the room occupancy declining because of the end of the state sheltering program.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, Darlene. Okay, next up, we have a report from our finance director, John Souza, an acceptance of, an acceptance of bequests for the Chelmsford Public Library for the estate of Angela Matthews.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, town manager Cohen. Tonight, I'd like to discuss a bequest for Chelmsford Public Library. For some background, library director Leslie Kimball contacted me back in late April after receiving a letter from attorney James Dangora, representing the estate of Angela Matthews. Attorney Dan Gora explained that Ms. Matthews left a bequest of just over $13,605 in her will for our public library, and he requested that a release document be signed. So we contacted town council regarding this matter, and we were advised that the process that we should follow is to ask the select board to vote to accept the bequest from Ms. Matthews, and then authorize the Board of Library Trustees to expend this gift in accordance with its terms. And I just wanted to say, you know, our public library greatly appreciates this generous donation. To facilitate this donation moving forward, I'd respectfully request that the board vote to accept the donation this evening, and I provided some sample language for the motion.
No.
No? Okay. Motion.
All right, I'll make a motion that the board votes to accept the bequest of $13,605.43 from the estate of Angela Matthews, and authorize the Board of Library Trustees to expend said gift in accordance with its terms.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Approved. Thank you. Thank you to the Matthews estate for the generous donation, also. It's really nice. It's wonderful. Okay, next on our agenda, we have select board approval of the new collective bargaining agreement with the library employees' union.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. As we discussed in executive session at the end of your last meeting, the town has reached an agreement with the library union on a new collective bargaining agreement in advance of the commencement of the agreement, which will start just under a month from now on July 1 of the upcoming fiscal year. Very similar to the three agreements that were approved at spring annual town meeting for the police department. This agreement with the library union covers the upcoming three fiscal years, and so it, again, moves us forward. In the brief summary of the memo of the agreement, which I'll pull up on the screen, basically there were some minor language changes. We asked our new library director and the union to go through, go through the current agreement, page by page, line by line, and they removed some, you know, basically extraneous language that was not material, such as there was language in there referencing the library construction project, which, as we know, has been quite some time since then. And, but more substantially, there were, you know, language regarding minor changes that, question come up about, if a library had questions about working additions, it said it'd be, can be discussed, and we added the words "with" to the library director, even though it was sort of implied, but again, it was just sort of good tidiness in terms of the language. We did, we did, for example, the union requested that we add language regarding the minimum staffing levels for the library, which we're certainly agreeable to, because we couldn't foresee any time that the Adams Library would be open without a department head and having the circulation and children's and reference specialists and a custodian in the building. So we agreed to that. On the issue of vacation leave, we cleaned up language and actually slightly accelerated vacation accrual. How it is currently under the current agreement is, for the first five years of employment, they get two weeks vacation, and then upon hearing the fifth year, they get, they get an extra week. And then the same thing happened, you know, after the 10th year, and then the 20th year, when you went, you know, three weeks, and then the fourth week, and so forth. So what we did is, we just said, well, why don't we do this? Take out this extra one-week bonus, and we'll just accelerate your vacation by one year. So basically, how it'll work now is, for the first four years of employment, they'll get two weeks vacation. Starting with the fifth year, they'll get three weeks. And the same thing with the 10th year, you would get the extra, the extra week. And then same thing on the 20th year, you get the 25 days. So it eliminated this peculiarity of having a bonus week when you hit a milestone. So again, it served the effect of cleaning up language, but also accelerating it, which was fine. And then there was a question about when they could use vacation for a new employee. Right now, you couldn't use it until six months, and we thought that was a bit harsh, so we did it for 90 days, which, which is a little more reasonable. So for example, we hired somebody, you know, this week, they wouldn't be able to take vacation until the holidays, and it's just like, no, it's a bit harsh. You know, three months, you're in a routine. That was fine. And then also the issue of vacation carryover. Right now, we limit to five days of carryover, and so we increased that to 10 days, which again, doesn't cost the town really anything. It only, it just, because it doesn't increase the cap, it just increases your carryover. The only time it would affect the town any materially would be upon retirement, that somebody could theoretically catch up with 10 days instead of five days. But, you know, that assumes somebody works till they're retired in the library at that time. So again, it wasn't, didn't have a significant material impact. And then we, another language thing, we retitled the word from, you know, donation, you know. So anyway, the key part of the agreement is, it's a three-year agreement. The wage schedule was increased by 3% for the upcoming fiscal year, and three and a quarter for the final two fiscal years. And then we increased the longevity schedule by $250 over the current level, so that it would read after 10 years, when you've completed all the steps in the pay schedule, instead of having $1,500, you'd go to $1,750, and then $250 for all the other levels upon the five-year anniversaries. And then, basically, we obviously changed the duration, rate, and date in the contract and so forth. And then again, we added language, that applications we submitted to the director, and we added "or the director's designee." So you can see, a lot of it was, was, you know, working on the fringes, but other parts were substantive. The important thing is, the unions ratified the agreement, I'm asking you to ratify the agreement on behalf of the town, then we'll bring it to town meeting for funding on the 23rd of this month. And I guess the big summary is, it's a fair agreement, it's in keeping with the town's financial condition, but it's also keeping with the market for comparable communities who employ librarians. So with that, I'll answer any questions that you may have, and respectfully ask for your ratification of this, subject to, obviously, the final step being town meeting, having to fund the first year in accordance with state law.
Anyone have any questions?
I notice they just have an appendix B that basically lists everybody in the union. Are they going to continue doing that?
Yeah, believe it or not, we do that, because it avoids any misunderstandings. And you're right, we don't do that with all contracts, but it, the library's a little different, and, and meaning that they are the only union in the town that represents part-time, 15-hour and above employees. And then they also have pages and other, so in order to avoid confusion about who's covered and who's not covered, the town has traditionally provided that schedule, therefore it's real clear who's, who's covered by the agreement. And it's worked, so they did request that we eliminate it. Our feeling is, is anytime you have specificity and clarity, it's a good thing in terms of what positions and who's covered and who's not covered, and it's worked well, so.
So if somebody is hired during the term of this contract, are they added to this?
Well, yeah, we can internal add it, but more importantly, it's the position that we find, not the person.
Yes, okay. Thank you.
Anyone else? I'll take a motion then.
Okay, I'll make a motion that this select board approves the agreement and authorize the town manager to enter into this agreement with the, between the town of Chelmsford and the Chelmsford Federation of Teachers, Local 3569, American Federation of Teachers, Massachusetts, and AFL-CIO as presented.
I'll second that.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. None opposed? All set? Thank you. Okay, next, we have up the Select Board's recommendation on the June 23 special town meeting warrant articles.
Yeah, and we're joined this evening by Christine Clancy, our Public Works Director. As the board may know, we have the five, I know the board knows, but for those watching, we have a five-artikel special town meeting coming up on the 23rd of this month. The primary purpose of calling that town meeting was to advance in a timely manner the replacement of the South Row Elementary School partial roof replacement, which is a project that we're going to receive over 50% reimbursement of eligible costs from the Massachusetts School Building Authority. The reason is that a special town meeting is, the cost estimates and schematic design was not completed in a timely manner for a spring annual town meeting. And the reason not to wait until the fall is, we need to advance this to the state for formal approval and action in order that we can bid it in a timely manner, because obviously with the school roof project, the optimal time and really practical time of doing this is in the summer. And in order to hit that schedule, we really need to be bidding it, you know, in November, and we, and doing it at a town meeting wouldn't give enough of a turnaround time for the state final approval and the procurement process. So that's why it's here, and that's the real primary reason for the town meeting. In addition to that, there's four other articles, one having to do with an elevator project for the high school, McCarthy Middle School, and Westland's Community Center route, elevator replacements. Christine Clancy will present upon that. Christine Clancy will present upon that. And then the third article is an article regarding the perimeter survey for the restriction on the coolest property, which is required for, to comply with the state law regarding a preservation restriction on the baseline survey for any open space land under the Community Preservation Act. The fourth one is what we just spoke of, was the library collective bargaining agreement. And then the fifth one is approval of regulations for, by the Cemetery Commission for private family mausoleums. So, with that as intro, I'm going to turn the podium over to Christine Clancy, our Public Works Director, who can give you the detailed presentation regarding the South Row Elementary School partial roof replacement.
So, sorry, I'm losing my voice, so I apologize if I take a sip of water. Thank you, good evening. So, the first article, as Town Manager Cohen said, is the South Row Roof Replacement Project. This is MSBA project. What you see before you is the aerial view of the South Row School. The hatched areas are part of this project area, so it is most of the school. The roof section that you see on the bottom of this, of the slide, is the white section that was installed in 2020. And then also, one, there's a, the modular unit roof section number five is estimated to have about 11 to 15 years of remaining life. As you, I think we talked about this at great length last year, we're coming upon a time where we have a lot of roof replacements ahead of us, so it's great to have this as part of the MSBA program. We do an annual roof inspection across all of our school and town buildings, and so that way we can try to plan for roof replacements. So, you know, we look at, we're looking at McCarthy, the school admin, these other projects, but this is one of our largest current projects, and, like I said, it's great to be able to be part of the MSBA program. So, these sections highlighted here, or hat, in the hatched areas, are noted in our annual report as Sections 2, 3, and 4, and I will get into greater detail as to the scope of the work. Next slide, please. So, those sections, as presented, have reached their end of the useful life, 26 years, 33 years to be eligible for the MSBA. The overall estimated cost of this is quite substantial. The amount that we are requesting at this special town meeting is exactly just over $4.5 million. Significant amount of money. And I think, honestly, first, when we looked at this, we were like, how, how can this, how do you work into this number, $4.5 million? Because when we're looking at, if you carry about, you know, $35, $45 a square foot, and this whole roof section's about 38,000 square feet, you're closer to like the $1 to $2 million. What here is, and I wanted to show this cross-section, I think it's important to show this cross-section, sorry, my slide just jumped, is that the existing roof structure is a, is a built-up roof, and it is composed of two roof sections. And I just, I thought it was important to show it here, because when we remove the roof, we're not just removing, we're not going over the existing roof, we're removing two sections of roof down to the steel decking. It is a built-up roof system, so this was the original decking installed in the 60s. Above that, there was a cold tar pitch built-up roof, and that is still intact from the 60s. And then above that is a tapered poly-silicon insulation. And then above that is the purlate insulation adhered asphalt. This is all embedded into the steel decking. Above that is the asphalt built-up roof, so this top piece was probably installed about 26, 26 years ago. And then on top of that is the aggregate. So, all this has to come down, and when you also remove that cold tar pitch, sometimes it comes up quite difficult, so it might have to also do some patching of this steel decking. This was all as part of the schematic design, so we've done test cuts, so we're pretty confident in that we see this cross-section. That was part of the investigations that led us to this four-and-a-half-million-dollar estimate. See if anything, so this whole, this is a picture of the roof. So, scope work removal, removal of two roof systems. With that, we did the cross-section, we did some testing, there is some abatement as part of that work, so that is also included in the cost estimate. We have solar panels on this roof. All of our schools have solar panels, or just about all of them. And with those solar panels, they're 10 years old. We still have 10 years left of these solar panels, but solar panels today are much more efficient than what they were 10 years ago. And the idea of taking the solar panels off of the roof and putting them back on, the thought was, could we put on, and I know it was discussed before, I think on some of the other roof projects, is, is it worth buying new solar panels? What MSBA will pay for is the cost to remove the solar panels and put them back on. They will not pay for the purchase of the new solar panels. We're estimating about $200, $300,000 to buy those new solar panels, and I, it will, so that is included in our estimated cost. It is an ineligible expense, but it's something that you're putting new panels on a new roof so that we don't have to, in 10 years, go on this roof and start ripping off panels and, you know, putting, putting new panels on, which could, you know, potentially compromise the integrity of that roof in 10 years.
So, it's $300,000 for, for new solar panels?
We're still working, so I think we've.
Isn't the cost to remove them and put them back on, like $300,000?
So, I have the exact breakdown.
But MSBA will pay for it.
Have, yeah, so we actually broke it out, the install, I think is $150 to $200, if I remember correctly. I have it right in front of me. And then we have a placeholder for, I think we have, oh, right here, let's see. Exact amount. We broke it out purposely so that MSBA would, would remove that expense. The exact amount is, I want to say... Just looking on this. I think it's about 250, it's either 250 or $300,000 where we ended up in that.
Yeah, I think it's, I specifically remember it because I was like, oh, jeez.
With the install and the replacement, you're close to $500,000. So, the install, $150, $200, because there's also contingencies that roll up into this, and about $250 is ineligible. So, I can confirm the exact number, but, and there's contingency, so it's hard to pull the exact number right here, but it's about half, like 40, 60, 50, 50. The ins, the removal and the reset would be eligible. The purchase, the new, and also with that is the, the panels, there are 800 panels on there right now, and, which also is stressing the decking just slightly, so it'd be great to be able to relieve that, that stress on the decking. So, the proposal is to remove 800 panels and put back 500 panels. But those 500 panels are more efficient than the existing panels, so we'll still receive the same, you know, the same solar, you know, solar, receive the same energy. With that, so, that is included in the cost. Also, with the MSBA, if you do hit a certain threshold of the cost of the project and the assessed value of the school, which is 30%, and we do, because it's assessed at just over $10 million, we do have to do some ADA, replay ADA improvements. So, in the initial assessment, the front does have some ADA improvements that are necessary. And also, one of the restrooms, the faculty restrooms off, off to, towards the cafeteria needs to be upgraded. So, that's about $350,000, too, that's been worked into this cost estimate. And then just other, you know, all the HVAC, we're not proposing to replace it. HVAC, the electrical, those are more just a remove and re-set. Drainage, you know, they have to do some drainage in the immediate, but there's no plans to, you know, it's also kind of just reconnecting the drainage that exists as the roofing. So, that is the overall scope. Primarily, the cost is really that second, it's really, you're removing two roofs.
We going back with Sonnenfeld on this?
So, it is, oh, sorry, PVC. So, we're going back with the PVC. So, it is white. So, it will match what you see here in the front.
And are we doing anything special with the panels to gain some of that reflection of the white roof?
There's nothing proposed right now to gain that, no. I guess we also haven't, we're only at schematic, so it's something we'll, we are going to try to maximize it, but we haven't looked at seeing how we can maximize that yet. Right now, we're just putting in, based on the cost for new panels, so we'll, we can look at that. I mean, they are proposed to be ballast, or put back in less panels. I mean, we'll definitely try to maximize.
Okay. I just want, I know, I, I happen to know that they make panels that.
Like dual, reflective?
You can get the reflective off the white roof, as well as the sun reflection, that gives you some additional power.
Yeah, we can look into that, that would be worth looking into it to see, because we do have some solar panels on some white PVC roof, too, so I can see, we can look at, but that's a good idea to look into it, to maximize that.
If we can afford it. What do we do with all the old panels?
So, that came up, I know last.
Anything special you have to do?
I mean, so, one question that came up, could we resell them? And there's still 10 years left on them, so potentially some type of resale. So, right now, we're just removing, I mean, we, we haven't figured out exactly what to do. We're not putting them back on the roof, we probably wouldn't want to, would not want to put them on another roof. So, hopefully, we can sell them, is potentially, you know, is there some credit from, by, or some credit by selling it? Worst case, would have to be disposal, but I hope we find some opportunity to, if someone wanted them, to sell them, whether it be municipal, or, well, that was the, that was brought up last week at the Finance Committee, too. So, our, our current plan is to see if there's any resale value. With that cost, so, anything over 1.5 million dollars for procurement is required to have OPM, so that's also included in the project. This includes the construction cost. Also, we are allowed to carry a 5% owner's contingency cost, so that's also included in this number. And this number, this $4.5 million is important because that number is presented as part of this MSBA process and really locked in. So, if, when we advance towards design, if that number is above 4.5, we own those costs. So, that's why we want to make sure that we could put enough conservative costs into the, the cost estimate, and we're capped at only a 5% contingency for the owner. And then with the reimbursement, MSBA is 52.26% of the eligible items. It works out to be about estimated $2.1 million, because, like I said, there's some ineligible items, really, the solar panels, and the general, there's a calculation they do, and take some of the general condition-related work, general conditions as it relates to the solar panels out of that eligible cost. So, $2.1 million is anticipated to come back to the town. And as Manager Cohen said, this is planned for summer 2026, so goal, goal would be to bid this this fall and have us lined up to begin as, as soon as school gets out next summer. We are talking about, does it make sense to remove the solar panels earlier, you know, like spring, so that's something we're still looking at to see if there's any benefit to, for the project, when we start to look into potential construction timelines. Are there any questions on this project?
In the Finance Committee unanimously recommended this with five members present, two absent.
Do you want to do these one at a time tonight, or do you want?
Yeah, I think so.
Yeah, we do it while it's fresh and the people here, sure.
Okay.
Ready for a motion?
Sure, I'm ready for a motion. Thank you. Unless, yeah, nobody has anything else? No? Sure.
I'll make a motion that the board approves the town to appropriate, approves the South Row Elementary School partial roof replacement as presented.
I'll second it.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. So, Article 2 is a request for additional funding for the school elevator project. Similar to the roofs, we do have a lot of elevator projects upon us. We have some school, schools, this is the school elevators, and we also have town elevators. So, just to give a little bit of a history of this, going back to 2022, we had a study performed by Elevator Engineering that performed an assessment of school elevators, and through that, they made some recommendations, and I will get into that in a couple of slides. From those recommendations, we recommended through FY24 Capital, $325,000 for the community ed building, for elevator, elevator replacement work, and $480,000 for replacement work at the CHS elevator. Also, for FY25, we, from that same recommendation, we appropriated $325,000 for the McCarthy elevator. All of these were appropriated very close together, and so we decided last, last summer, last fall, to put together one project. So, we had to procure the designer services, that went out as RFP, and that was, that was issued, it was October, November last year, to BLW Engineers. So, it was one project, the three schools. The CHS, so, from the elev, associated elevator, elevator engineering report, this is what their assessment, this, from their study was in 2022. The CHS elevator is 50 years old, three floors. They recommended a buried hydraulic cylinder that should be considered for replacement. Being buried often is, can be, can deteriorate, so they recommended that be replaced. And they had indicated, all of the major components are beyond their useful life. The McCarthy and Community Education elevator, essentially, they're the same elevator, very similar, 35 years old, two floors, there's one additional stop at ComEd. And the, the comment made in that assessment was, overall in good condition, but with dated components. And because they're dated components, they recommended some replacement of the elevators. Also, they noted the buried hydraulic cylinder that should be considered for replacement, and replacement of the car and hall buttons and the controller components. So, with that information, with the appropriated funded, funding, we, you know, this past fall, winter, we contracted with BLW Engineers, and they did a very detailed assessment, I have it right here, very detailed report, looking at all, they, looking at all three elevators to see what was recommended for replacement, also looking at the, the stretch code to see what is necessary for replacement or upgrades. And then with that, you know, building the schematic design, the plan is to then build their, next steps will be DD, and then we'll be looking toward, for construction. The goal is to have this constructed next summer, just given the lead times. And that's also why we're here tonight, is because we were looking at, could this be a town meeting in the fall? There's significant lead times on elevators, so the goal would be to get this procured this summer. So, with that detailed assessment that was completed by BLWs, they recommended, this is their recommendation, extensive replacements recommended at each location, essentially relocating all control mechanical, electrical, and CAP components. Additional electrical infrastructure upgrades at the elevators are required to make those upgrades. Also, there was some additional code requirements that they had noted. The code requires that the mechanical room be heated and cooled, and they are not right now, so that is something that we would have to, to do to bring it up to code for both, for all three elevators. And I'll get into the cost in the next slides, but also, with a recommendation of exceeding $1.5 million, now we have to bring on an owner's project manager, and that is required by mass state, mass procurement requirements. So, that's also been factored into this budget request. And then also, just looking at the overall cost, there's other, just industry escalation, I think, that we're seeing. When I was putting together the costs and the capital requests, other neighboring towns for two-floor elevators were budgeting about the same that we had. So, I think there's also industry costs associated with some of these, this request. So, next slide, please. So, this is the, the estimate that was from the BLW report. This is the estimate that they built in, this is the estimate that they came up with, with a 30% schematic design, and after their very detailed assessment. So, what they came up with is the Chelmsford High School elevator is $565,000, the Community Education elevator, $570,000, the McCarthy Middle School elevator, $545,000. It's very similar costs spread out amongst the three, but different from the, the previous estimates that were provided in 2022. That brings it to $1.68 million. Here, we're factoring in an estimate, $75,000 for an owner's project manager, an owner's contingency, and then that brings the subtotal, subtotal to $1.83 million. The original funded through FY24 and FY25 Capital is $1.13, so that net, that, that net funding that we need is the $700,000, and that is this, this warrant article request. And this breaks it down a little bit further to show the, each elevator, the components of the replacements for each elevator. And then on the right, it was the original amount that was budgeted or recommended from the study performed by Elevator Engineering. So, for the Chelmsford High School elevator, the conveying system's $345,000, the general construction conditions estimated $70,000, mechanical upgrades, we talked about the heating and cooling in each room, $50,000, the electrical system upgrades required, $60,000. And then the design, which is, that design's already funded, that's a design we're moving forward to $40,000, so $565,000. Comparing that to the 2022, it was essentially, for pure elevator replacements, it was $120,000 recommended by, in our, the study performed, and we had carried $480,000 to factor in design, owner's contingency, and other general constructions, components. Moving further down, community ed, very similar, cost breakdown comes up to $570,000. And both community ed and McCarthy in the 2022 assessment had very similar replacement, replacement recommendations, also cost recommendations, so $117,000 recommended for pure elevator upgrades, and we had a... Um, and we had a uh overall construction budget of three hundred and twenty five thousand dollars. Um, so that it it's it's, I guess, really the evolution of how we went from a a study two thousand twenty two. And then when we redid the further study, also bring in the code, compo- code requirements with the necessary electrical, mechanical. Those costs really escalated, and that's why we're here here tonight in for a special town meeting to ask for the additional seven hundred thousand dollars. Um, are there any questions?
Christine, I have a a couple, and depending on the answers, I can probably keep them brief. But is there a general, just remind me if you've said it before, is there a general life on elevators? I know usage probably drives that, but.
Usage does drive it, so I mean, we have one that's fifty years old and thirty five. So I think we start to look at, I mean, thirty five, fifty years, I would say, is what we're, I mean, we still have some that are fifty. But typically, we start to look at replacements, we get to thirty, thirty five years.
And and so we're really at, this is not just the any maintenance delayed or deferred, this is truly, we're at end of life regardless.
Well, so we're at end of life, there's, I mean, fortunately, these have not broken down or anything. And that's why I think the two thousand twenty report was saying that in good condition for for two of them at least. Because there wasn't any history of breakdowns, but they're older components. And these being in schools that you really have to have that redundancy, especially at the McCarthy and the community eds, because there's no other redundancy.
Good then, thanks.
Thank you.
Yeah, I have one question, Christine, how often do the codes change for these?
So when codes are updated annually, but we went back to look at the specific. So first thing I thought was, okay, stretch code recently changed, so it must have been a very recent code change. That specific code change for the venting spaces, I think it was two thousand eighteen or nineteen, it just wasn't noted. The no one real, when the study was done, it wasn't looking at the in-depth electrical, mechanical, it was just looking at the elevator components. Um, so it could change, I mean, every year there's always some updates, but that change was going back a few years ago.
So you're confident that the new ones will meet any upcoming changes?
Yeah, I mean, yes, well, I mean, we just up adopted the stretch code, so I don't see any significant other, I mean. I guess a code could always change, right, we're designing right now based on the current code right now. And that and that's what the engineers look and BLW is looking at is the detail, looking at the current code. There's also was a vent a venting component um as well that we're um vent the vent where we're venting, so that's look the look looking through the entire code.
Thank you.
Anyone else have anything?
Finance committee recommended five to zero with two absent on this article.
Okay. Nobody has anything, I'll take a motion.
I'll make a motion that the the select board recommend approval of Article two at town meeting as presented.
I'll second that.
Motion in a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Christine.
Thanks, Christine.
Right, they get a lot of, they get a lot easier at this point. Article three is, as I mentioned at the outset, is for the perimeter survey for the Coolest Farm property, open space property. Um, this, as I mentioned, this is required as part of the baseline survey to in order to place a deed restriction on the open space land. Why this is expensive is is that it it's four separate parcels totaling forty one point nine one acres. And they it also with the work will also include the staking of the property lines. Um, here's the GIS ver- version of those four parcels. You can see there are two on each side of Interstate four ninety five, one being the main parcel. Um, which obviously it's it's not, you know, like most, it's not a straight border. Um, and so they have to go out there and we can rely on GIS mapping and so forth. And and so we have to do as we've done in previous open space lands, conduct the perimeter survey. That gets submitted to the service uh conservation restriction holder and then gets recorded. And then it's used for future years follow-up for the property. Um, this does not pertain to the use of the property, it's just that no matter how the property is used, you have to have a perimeter survey. So that's what's requested under this article. And what happened was the working with the conservation commission, they obtained a few cost estimates. And the that the lowest responsible cost estimate was thirty three six, and that's the request under this article. And again, as I've said earlier, um, on other articles, finance committee's recommendation on this article was also five to zero with two members absent.
Do we have questions?
Well, this gets done on any type of open space that we purchase, right? This is normal course.
Under under the Community Preservation Act, because the state requires it as part of the condition, and we have to have the restriction held by a third party, yes.
Okay, I'll take a motion.
Okay, I'll make a motion that um this board votes to um recommend approval of Article three as presented.
I'll second that.
Motion in a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, art, thank you. Article four is the library collective bargaining agreement. Uh, as you just voted earlier this evening, if the three, the uh three-year bargaining agreement. Um, and what what happened is when the agreement was finalized, the library director Leslie Kimbo worked with the town accountant Darlene Lucier. And as kind of Pat noted, you got to go through employee by employee to cost this out the first year. And that total sums up to fifty five thousand three hundred and eighty eight dollars. Uh, and also, uh, finance committee unanimously recommended this as well, five to zero with two members absent.
Questions? Well, I'll take a motion.
I'll make a motion that this board recommend approval of Article four um as presented.
I'll second that.
Motion in a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. The final article is Article five, Regulations for Private Family Mausoleums. And I put this as the final article because not only was the last one submitted, we thought it was pretty ministerial that state law requires the Board of Cemetery Commissioners to obtain town meeting approval um for cemetery regulations, and in this case for private family mausoleums at burial grounds. And so what what it provided to the finance committee and provided to you and what will be provided to the town meeting is. We'll put in the final version of the cemetery commissioners' regulations. So that way they have them distributed uh at the meeting and we'll put them online. Just for everyone knows, this is, and of course Jeff knows, but this is a private family mausoleum, because he was, what's a mausoleum? As you can see, it's an above-ground structure. And fortunately, we have not only Jeff's expertise in the room this evening, we have our cemetery director, David Boyle. And we have a cemetery commissioner, Nancy Suzer, in the room this evening. Um, this is what is, you know, is um is being advanced as regulations for for private family mausoleums. And as you've seen, the regulations, they go on for a few pages. Um, and they cover things such as your lot size, being a minimum of four hundred square feet with three foot setbacks. Uh, design has to be approved by the cemetery superintendent, the landscaping would have to be returned to its pre-existing condition. They, much like any other cemetery uh investment or placement of a monument, you have to have a ten percent perpetual care agreement. In this case, ten percent of the mausoleum construction costs. And for entumements and interments, only one casket inside each crypt of the mausoleum structure. Um, so that's what we're dealing with, I don't know, the, if there's anything need to add, David or Nancy, in terms of. Uh, you know, there 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 were some questions at the finance committee, the finance committee approved it by two members absent, one abstaining, three in favor, one opposed. And I and and they had questions like, well, what about the height of these? Is there a regulation on height and what about adornments on it and so forth? And so that's why we asked Nancy and uh and and David to come this evening if there are any concerns that the board had or to address concerns uh on this article.
Who has control over the aesthetic and size?
The cemetery, yeah, cemetery commissioners and through their superintendent, and that's how it specified in the regulations. Again, we're not the first cemetery to do mausoleum, so this is.
No, we've had this request for a couple of years now, so.
Go ahead, good, good evening, David.
Yeah, so so basically, um, I've had a, I've had a few requests for the for the ability to put up mausoleums. When we re- when we developed the area in the back of Pine Ridge now, um, I set up a specific area for mausoleum lots. They're all, they're already marked, they are all um mapped, and they have specific sizes to them. So um, obviously, the minimum is the four hundred, four hundred square feet, it goes up to like four hundred and fifty square feet. So as far as the sizing, um, the width, the depth, they're they're set, they're so to speak, set in stone. Um, as far as the height, we will, we will come up with, um, the the minimum maximum height will come up with a uh. You know, probably within six inches, that's the way we do our maus-, that's the way we do our monuments. You basically have, you know, between anywhere from uh three foot plus or minus a couple inches. So that's what we'll do for the mausoleums too. Uh, again, it'll be myself, the commission. We'll review the, we'll review the the drawings and so forth and approve it based on that. Uh, it'll be a maximum of two, like you see there. Uh, as far as um the cost of them, they can be anywhere from seventy five thousand up to a hundred and fifty. It it it's as high as the people want to go, basically. Um, and like Paul mentioned, yeah, ten percent of that would go towards into perpetual care fund. So down the line, if there's ever any, you know, ever, if there's any upkeep that we need to do, we have it, we have the funds to take care of that.
So I have a question, you you said that that you're planning now and having these in a new part of the cemetery.
Yes.
Would they be all separated from like a traditional?
They're, so they're actually not, and when you look at the lot, when you look at the plan of Pine Ridge, they um, it's actually technically section O. And there are two grave lots that go right up to that area, there's some separation with some maple trees. Um, the plan is we'll do some specific landscaping in that area to kind of show off that area as far as we'll do some um abrevieties and so forth. And it it's a, like the niche walls I have, it's a, it's not a huge area. So it needs to be, I like things neat, clean, you know, no mess, anything like that. So I, that's basically what we're, you know, what I'm looking, just like you see there. You know, you can do some, you could, you could do some um, you know, flowers or anything like that. As far as the questions in regard to statues and so forth, it is specific in the rules and regs right here. Um, that the only other, the only other structure, I mean, the only other monument or memorial that'd be allowed would be the a flush two by one marker. And that's if there was a cremation burial in that lot. So, and as far as the cost and so forth, we're not building anything, all I'm doing is selling the lot. That was, we're selling the lot, and then, you know, the family will incur all the cost. So, and basically, the cemetery won't be doing any part of it, we'll be monitoring it, but not, we're not going to have any part of the building of it.
We're not going to allow for that monstrous, like they have in Concord now, are we?
No, 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 that's that's, that's what I don't want.
Exactly.
So how are the names placed on on?
So the names can be, just for this, for this particular one here, the names can be etched on the on the black granite there.
Okay.
The last name could be put up on the roof there and the specific names on the black. Um, so, I mean, it's all up to the, it it's just like any family going into the monument, you know, they they design their own monument. Once they sign off on it, the monument company sends it to me, I approve it and approve it or disapprove it. So, but obviously, something like this, this will be a cemetery commission decision.
They could also adhere bronze plaques to it, like we do with the niches.
Wait, so is it a, is it a commission decision or superintendent commi- decision?
Well, it'd be joint. Yeah, I mean, what I would do, I mean, I have, there's enough, there's, I think there's all total. I have fifteen, fifteen uh mausoleum lots. So and and like I said, I've had maybe a half dozen people inquire about it, so um.
But that's all you have, that's all the inventory you have.
Yeah, that's all I have, you know, yeah.
Oh, yeah, so there isn't going to be a never-ending chain of?
No, 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 this is going to be, it it's a smaller, like I said, it's a, it's not smaller, but it's a, it's a compact area where they're going to go. Um.
And and what's the maximum number in each, two or four?
Yes, two, two, two. But you'll be able to also do an internment, so. And then, like I said, with the with the lots here, some of the lots are twenty by twenty, some of the lots are twenty by twenty two. To maximize, to maximize space, like I said, we'll offer cremation internment, they're also ground burial. So use every drop of space I can use.
And so if there's a design that that you just don't approve of for, I'm sure, sound reasons. Um, kind of you and the the commissioner are the final authority on that, if somebody doesn't like your answer, it's, it is what it is, right?
It is, basically, like, like I said, we we will come up with a height, with with a height, I, that's the only thing I didn't have in there. I'll come up with the height and um it'll be a plus or minus six inches or so. And uh, from there, that's what it will, yeah, that's what it'll be.
Concord recently allowed, what, about three high, is that one?
I think so, yeah.
Huge, yeah.
We just don't have the space for that.
It's not something you want to see.
No, no.
So can I just ask on the the article, it's, so we're voting to approve regulations made by the Board of Cemetery Commissioners? So are they, are they, is it a cemetery regu- is it a zoning regulation?
No, it's a cemetery commission regulation.
It's a cemetery commission regulation.
State law requires the cemetery regulations to be approved by town meeting.
Okay, so is this, I mean, is this the actual language of the regulation or it's yet to be drafted?
No, it's, the draft is there, it's multiple pages. Uh, and again, they're going to amend it to the, add the, yeah, they're going to add the, they're going to add the height restriction on it. So we'll cer- we'll circulate that out in advance.
Okay, yeah, I was looking for like regulatory verbiage here, and I'm not seeing it, okay.
Yeah, we'll post that in advance at the meeting.
Okay. Okay, does anyone have any other questions, comments? Okay, I'll take a motion.
Okay, I'll make a motion that this board recommend approval of Article five uh as presented.
I'll second that.
And a motion in a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, okay, next up we have, um, Paul, we don't have, do we have anything on the agenda that anybody in the audience needs to?
Not that I know of.
Okay, so then we'll just go, and I just didn't know if there was anything that I should maybe take out of order before we go down our very specific list here. Um, so next up, we have establishing the select board and town manager fiscal year two thousand twenty six goals.
Yeah, based upon the discussion at your meeting, last meeting, I took the two twenty five fiscal year goals and then updated them to what I understood the discussion to be uh at your meeting last week, so I don't know if this, you know, hopefully I captured accurately what you were looking for. And then once, once you adopt them, then I'll distribute them to department heads, and then we'll come in with quarterly reports on these goals.
I notice there's a few in there, and I think I've mentioned this before, that seem to be just part of your regular day-to-day. Um, responsibilities, maybe like grant opportunities and legislative funding, I mean, we do those all the time. I mean, do they really need to be a, an actual goal?
It's up to you, I mean, I don't mind reporting, that, to me, I'm always looking at the reporting mode, does the board want me to come in and report on a quarterly list of activities?
I know, I feel like we have this conversation, this conversation comes up every year, though, where you're like, what is actually, does it belong on a goals list? Or is it just actually part of your job description, I guess, at this point, yeah?
Whatever the board's preference is.
It's fine, I mean, I guess we can leave it on here, I think we can probably just leave it on here as a, as a shout out to its importance, I guess, given our budgetary concerns, right? To always be looking for that stuff, I don't, I'm okay with leaving it on there, if nobody minds.
I have no sense either way, I'm fine to take, because some of them really are just go to daily job description.
I mean, I'm going to commit to collective bargaining whether it's a goal or not, because I've got to bring it in.
Likewise, you know, if you get a a particular grant.
Right, we're going to report it.
Report it, you know, so.
So are there any ones in particular that you guys think we could knock off for this?
Those were two, I would say, right, you know, the grant in the first section, the grant opportunities and legislative funding. I mean, we talk to the legislators twice a year, and Paul is always in touch with them about.
I don't even, where are you seeing?
The first one, under the fiscal management and visibility, number three.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, I was looking at the end.
Okay.
Yeah, collective bargaining seems.
Right, even, well, yeah, even collective bargaining, I mean, there's nothing special about it, we think.
We have to do it, yeah.
Yeah, I don't know that that's a goal, that's more of a.
Yeah, all right, so there's three.
Okay, we can pull those three out, yeah.
So we can mix collective bargaining.
Sorry, before we start just taking things off, because I understand where you guys are going with it. Um, but there are. Um, but there are, you know, I, I supported all the discussion the other day, and, you know, I didn't come in here tonight with any, you know, major thoughts on this particular list because it kind of captured that. Um, but, you know, I, I think, yes, legislative funding opportunities is part of Paul's day-to-day job. But I don't want it to just be part of his day-to-day job that he just does and now we don't get to be a part of our hearing of the discussion. So if there's a different way to, to make sure we're getting the report out on that, then that's fine.
We get a report every, every week on, in almost anything that, that happens in that regard.
Yeah, so, you know, like I said, if a grant opportunity is there and, and Paul seizes it and executes it, then he's going to come report it to us and say, there you go, a grant, just like uh, any of the other items. Legislative funding opportunities, you know, our time's probably limited on that, but, you know, um, you know, we take part in that and then, you know, um, Paul guy kind of guides us.
Well, the forty B safe haven, I mean, if we hit that, that's a fluid situation that would probably come back to us. And if it does, then obviously we'd have to be updated.
Right, that would be one, yeah, that would probably.
Yeah, that one's done because it, it'll stay till the next, well, under the current rules and ranks, till the next federal census in twenty, you won't have to deal with that till twenty thirty-two. So yeah, we could pull that one off if you wanted to because.
So, should we just start at the beginning and walk through these perhaps?
Yeah, we'll do that, sure.
Do we want to just go down the list and, and if anybody want to just call out if they, if they think it's one that we could possibly remove or expand upon here? So early notification of financial issues.
I think since that is, you know, pretty critical over the next couple of years.
Leave it as a priority.
Yep.
Yeah, because some of these are priorities, right? Goals slash priorities. Okay, so I think I'm good with that. Uh, fee structure evaluation.
We just did that, but are we going to do it again?
Well, yeah, we, we.
Leave that on here again.
Okay.
I think you have to, yeah.
Um, grant opportunities. Like I said, I feel like that kind of goes on, online with the fee structure of, like, looking for, for income opportunities, right? I mean, as a priority, I know you're already doing it, every, we're already doing it, but to kind of prioritize it, I wouldn't mind leaving it on there.
The grant opportunities?
Yeah.
I have no sense either way.
Um, legislative funding opportunities. We leave that one on there?
If we're just going to leave everything on there, why don't we just leave everything on there?
It's the same vein. We're looking, we're going to look everywhere for money.
Marijuana and other revenue options, the same. Operational saving options, it's the same, yeah.
So if I was Paul and I was looking at this list, it is a little daunting, right? Because there's a lot of TM nexus, so I, I guess.
Yes.
This cap, this Paul has captured everything I think we all said.
Yeah.
So is there anything on here that you're like, this is part of my day-to-day job, I'm going to report out on it anyways? This document isn't necessarily a place to call it out?
So I feel like collective bargaining jumps out at me, but other than that.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, we could scrap the collective bargaining. I mean, it's going to happen, you know. I'll, I'll be reporting to you as, as necessary anyway.
Right.
But we can scrap that one out, yeah.
But if that's the same with these other ones, like Pat was saying, for legislative funding opportunities, I assume you're doing that day-to-day and as long as we're going to be, you know, as long as you're going to report out on it, then I would agree, it's taking up a line item.
But.
Well, some of it, I need your input on, like, when we do the earmarks, they come to you and say, what should we be asking the delegation for? Um, you know, so it's.
And most of the department heads are very good at the grant opportunities. I mean, you know, somebody like Gary Ryan is constantly searching for stuff, the police chief and, and those guys, so, I mean, it's, it's, it's not just Paul, it's Paul, the reporting mechanism, I guess, so. But uh, it's just part of daily, I mean, it's always been part of what we've done for twenty-five years, as long as I've been involved.
It is something that we do, but I do think there's always more opportunity there, and having it on a goal list keeps it at the top of people's minds to some extent, that looking for more opportunities for those grants and more opportunities for funding opportu- for funding is, is a priority.
Wouldn't that kind of be rolled into revenue options? You know, just a little bit further down there? I mean, because that's what it is, right?
Yeah.
Marijuana and other revenue options, yeah. I mean, yeah.
Maybe that should be just more generic to just.
One line, revenue options.
Options, yeah.
Okay.
Because you have operational savings, so, you know, when you don't have anything specific there.
Yeah.
Still be nice to get a report at the end of the year with all the other towns that are raking in for the past fiscal year or two.
Yeah, it's nice to see.
Yeah, I'd like to see that.
So we all agree though, collective, should, do we think collective bargaining can come off? Because that's more of like an operational, yeah, okay. So let's, let's.
I'm fine with wrapping those three into something more generic too. If that was still on the table.
I mean, that's, yeah, the legislative stuff is revenue options too, right?
Yeah, yeah.
There you go.
Yeah, it could just be revenue options, grant options, legislative, something like that.
Or just revenue options, I mean, that's all bringing revenue in.
Yep.
That covers it.
Yeah.
Yeah, and you okay with that?
Yeah, that's okay.
So is it, it's going to be grant, comma, legislative, comma, and other revenue options to just explore?
No, just other revenue.
Okay, rev- revenue option, okay. Alright, we'll do that, okay.
Wait, so which, which ones would you like to roll into other revenue options? Marijuana, legislative funding, grant opportunities?
Yeah, so they just become revenue options.
What about free str- fee structure evaluation? I mean, then you're, these are all about generating revenue, so.
I think that's.
Fees are pretty, fees are pretty specific. Can we go line by line on those, so?
That's almost a project in itself when the time comes, so.
So we leave that one separate?
Yeah, I mean, that's, yeah, it's really done a little bit differently by, you know, comparing what other communities do and what we can.
And we leave operational saving options as a separate line, and we just roll in grant opportunities, legislative funding opportunities, and other revenue options as a line?
Correct.
Okay, so those three.
It's just going to be called other revenue options, okay.
Or additional revenue.
Additional, additional revenue options, okay.
Yeah, or grant, you could even call, you could even leave it in there. It's a grant, funding, and other revenue options or whatever, right? If you want to leave it a little bit more specific, but also leave it open for other revenue options. But then it's one line item, so it's not, yeah, it shortens your.
Yeah.
Okay.
So that every, you don't have to report on all, all, all those things, just the ones that have changed.
Yes, yeah. I like that. Everybody good with that?
Yep.
Okay. So under sewer, stormwater, drainage water, is there anything here that anybody?
Well, the first one, we, we get that report every, that's the one we get every month, correct?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
We need to keep that, I mean, and it's.
That's flow. We may be, we may be continuing to look at other ways to do reductions in terms of, you know, the pilot programs that we offered in terms of the connection to the storm saint drain and so forth. So it, hopefully it goes beyond just reporting.
I'm good with this.
Yeah, I think each one is important to leave it.
Okay. Um, under infrastructure? I think that's, it's pretty good.
Yep.
I mean, road sidewalks, construction and planning, that's always going on too, but I guess that's kind of a.
That's when we get the most calls and inquiries about it.
Yeah, so it's kind of, it's a priority again, yeah.
We want visibility on that.
Yeah, I was wondering, you know, when we start talking about them, if we could have a more comprehensive, I guess you could say, report about when it's uh, a road is going to be done, not just one or two years out, but five or ten, because people always wonder. I know it's hard.
The problem is they change.
I know they change, but still.
And then people will be pulling old ones and be confused and say, my road was on here.
Clarissa Drive was on for this year, but because it had deteriorated, it got pulled, and it's going to be a total reclaim a year from now. And that's where it gets, because you really, you know, it doesn't, they don't weather the same.
It's a moving target.
Yeah.
And budgets get pulled back.
Yeah, it's a moving target, exactly.
Yeah. Well, anyway, we can talk about.
Okay, so we'll leave that. Um, what about town government focus areas? Traffic. This looks good to, this looks good to me.
Yep.
I like traffic, it would be under infrastructure or town government focus areas. I don't know, I guess.
But oftentimes they're not infrastructure solutions, they're, they could be signage, they could be, you know, those type of matters. So that's, that's really the traffic safety, it's really the traffic safety committee, you know, coming periodically when needed.
I'm okay with these if you guys, if everyone else is, okay. Um, boarding committee initiatives?
Like I said, I think we can scrap the chapter forty B safe haven because we're there.
Mm-hmm.
We officially got there, so I think we can, we can pull that one out.
Yeah, that's great. Um, everything else.
Well, does, does the pet cemetery belong here?
I didn't know where else to put it.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's kind of a.
I didn't.
Okay, yeah.
And what about the ADUs slash housing planning board? I mean.
Well, we just wanted to see what.
The reason this year is because it's another board, and that's why it's boarding committee initiatives. It's, the idea was it's after, is to periodically review the impact in terms of what are we getting for ADUs? Is the bylaw working? Does it should be changed and altered? So that was why we, we left it there under ADUs and housing.
Yeah, I think at, at least for this year to see what, what effect it does have.
Yeah. So there's no real goal here, but it's oversight, it's.
Oversight and monitoring, yeah.
Monitoring, yeah.
Yeah, just like the.
Like the open space.
Yep.
Because the open space um, has already been submitted and has been approved, so it's just implementation now.
So I'm okay, other than the forty B safe haven that we can take off. I'm okay with everything else. Anybody?
There's no reason that would change, right? They'll do a housing count at twenty.
Unless the state changes the rules. The current rules, they, it only gets updated every ten years.
The census.
Shouldn't change until twenty thirty. They'll do the census in twenty thirty, they won't get the data till twenty thirty-two. You probably won't see it affect till twenty thirty-three.
And I don't, and I don't think when something is under a forty B, for the most part, they don't change ever, right?
No, they are perpetual, yeah. They're, 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 some of the older ones did have an expiration date, but not, not in the next.
So we don't have to worry about falling out of compliance, is my point.
No.
Okay, uh, strategic plan. That one seems pretty straightforward.
Yep.
Yeah. Process improvements? Anybody? Good? Uh, policy updates? Minutes policy.
Yeah, these are all new, so, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Okay.
Some of, some of the, the timing on them, you know, maybe, but, you know.
Remember the town accountant hiring process.
Pat mentioned that.
Since, since we have the town, town council and town manager, I figured since those are the three major.
Oh, okay, makes sense.
And it's, it should be pretty easy, I should.
Just so that we have all three, yeah.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, okay.
Um, volunteer appreciation. Those are good. And does anybody have the charter update? I'm good. It just looks okay to me.
When is the next um, scheduled time for a charter review?
It's every seven years. I think it's twenty-seven.
Yeah, we have a couple more years, yeah.
Alright.
You can do it anytime.
That's okay.
No, I mean, you can, you can submit a charter, a charter change anytime.
But the study committee is every seven years.
Now, do we want to vote to adopt these tonight?
Yeah.
As, as amended?
Yeah.
Okay, if everybody's cool, we can, I'll take a motion.
Okay, I'll make a motion that this board approves and accepts the um, fiscal year twenty-six select board town manager goals um, as amended and presented.
I'll second that.
Motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Next up we have discussion topics for upcoming meeting with the town state legislative delegation.
Yeah, and we, we originally were scheduled to have the delegation, meaning Senator Barrett, Representative Osiero, Elliott, and uh, Cataldo this evening. That, they weren't able to do that because of conflict, so I've asked them to come in two weeks from tonight. Uh, but when I spoke to Representative Elliott and Representative Cataldo, I think we saw them at the um, Memorial Day observance, they said, well, could you give us some of the topics? And I said, okay. And so when I thought more about it, the, the most recent correspondence we had, which was dated in February, um, which was dated to all them, was sort of the, um, came from the, the, the select board at the time. It basically pertained to the Municipal Empowerment Act. Um, some of them have been addressed, such as the COVID-era meeting guidelines. But I thought this would sort of be the departure point in terms of what, you know, what would we want to discuss with the delegation when we see them on their every six-month visit. So that's why I put this letter in, in your packet. Um, because I think some of them are still concerns, you know, elderly exemptions for, you know, property taxes. Um, you know, um.
Didn't we do something about that at town meeting or not? I know we did the veterans one.
We did the veterans one, but there is, they, they haven't sort of enhanced, there's been talk about it, but they haven't enhanced for, for elderly exemptions.
Okay. Yeah, like I said, the first one's already been done.
Yeah.
The first one's already been done.
And the coal increases for veterans.
For veterans, we did, yeah.
So the first one's already been done, third one has already been done. Oh no, is that right?
Yeah. We, we did have to have a senior and.
So the first, second, and third?
Yeah.
Well, the second you said is.
This, there's been talk about expanding senior exemptions, but the legislature hasn't, they've done a number of home rule petitions, but they haven't done anything. But I think it's something we can talk to them and see if there's some movement on that.
The collection of motor vehicle excise taxes, is that um, I remember John Souza talking about that before.
Did they do that?
Haven't done that, no.
Okay.
Yeah, because they, yeah, if they notify the RMV, the RMV can suspend their licenses, right? But that's currently not a thing.
Right. I think the concern there with the legislature was you'd be discriminating from those who are of lower means and therefore that, that might prevent them from getting employment to then solve it, you know, so it became this sort of circular.
It's just kind of part of the cycle, yeah.
That if, yeah, how can they get a job if they can't get to their job?
Yes.
For the non-payment of their taxes.
Yeah, pretty, that's pretty, cycle of poverty.
Yeah.
Classic, classic stuff right there. Hmm. So is that even a conver?
If it's not a conversation you want to have with them, we can, I won't put it on the list.
Is it um, is it going anywhere in the state?
I don't think it's going to happen in the next six months now.
It's probably not a huge priority.
They're going to recess at the end of July, and as you can tell, we're already into June, and all they've been really dealing with is budget um, so far. And, but, so we don't see any movement on this at this point.
And Rodney's on Ways and Means, so he would have a lot of information around the budget, I'm sure.
Yeah.
I just don't see what the, what the benefit to us is really.
Well, there was something that John Souza had mentioned that would be beneficial to him.
Okay, and would it be?
It's revenue, because we're miss, we're missing taxes there.
Well.
Yeah.
I mean, it was just an easier way to report it, right?
Right.
Um, and, and at, at the time, we, we just went through the whole list of what was on the Municipal Empowerment Act, and that's, and we picked these things out.
Okay.
That's why they're all on here.
The double pole enforcement. We've had that conver, didn't we have that conversation with them last year? Let's have it again.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think, I think.
Everybody's got the issue, right? So is that, why do we?
And there is a hearing going on right now about this by the state DPU, but it, you know, we, I, I got the report today, which I'll report in next meeting, and we're still at forty-one. Because Verizon did some work, but yet Comcast didn't. So now Comcast, twenty, twenty of the forty-one are being held up by Comcast as next to go. And then, and then there's seventeen that are third-party carriers, meaning neither Verizon, Contact, or Comcast, or National Grid. It's these fiber companies that are stuck on the poles, and you can't move the pole, remove the pole until everybody's off. And so I actually wrote National Grid today saying, how do we get part, how do we get action on these third parties? Because literally twenty-five percent of them are basically of, you know, of the forty-seven, I think it was like thirteen of them were third parties. So it's frustrating because they don't care. They, they don't, they don't have any, they don't come before the town. But anyway, but I think the double pole thing is, it's, there is some movement on that because it's.
I mean, that's something.
And, and it's time, and why it's time is because utilities want to increase the electrification, which means they want to put new poles in, and so the last thing the cities and towns want is to have double pole issues as the utilities come in and increase the pole height and new poles because of, because of the, because of the demands for electrification. So I think that's why that you're seeing this, hopefully some movement on this, because something's got to happen.
And the last one, the um, the OPEB.
Yeah, to form a commission to at least look at it, because the last time it was looked at was Governor DePaul Patrick was governor. And, and that's when the last time it got serious and it fell apart at the end. So it's been obviously over a decade.
So would Medicare costs be part of that conversation, the way that it's written right here?
It's.
I don't know, do we?
It's really for the, it's really for the, the benefit itself in terms of, you know, the fact that people get this benefit for working ten years. Uh, and it's not prorated. So.
Yeah.
Whether you're a ten year employee or, you know, twenty five year employee, you get the same benefit. Unlike the pension, you, your benefit is based on your tenure of service.
But so in looking at that, like, I, I think about like our OPEB, um.
Liability.
Liabilities and how, how much our Medicare costs went up this year. Is there anything going on at the state level to kind of, I mean, is that even on their radar at all?
I mean.
Is that something worth asking them about?
We can. There was talk today about prescription, in the Senate about prescription drug caps and so forth, but. It, it's, we don't see any evidence that this is gonna get reined in.
Well, maybe we should ask some of that.
We can ask them.
Because that's a huge, I mean, that was a massive, massive part of our budgetary concerns this year, you know? I mean, I know it's more of a, it's a federal issue, but obviously that's what our state reps are.
Well, hopefully by the end of June, we'll have a clear picture of the federal thing. I mean, if they can get the bill passed, I mean, we don't know.
Yeah.
You know, the state's gonna be reliant on that, I'm sure.
I mean, do you think that would be helpful to?
Yeah, I think it's helpful, at least.
Maybe they have.
See what they're hearing, because obviously they're concerned, as Jeff noted, well, what's gonna happen from the federal level pushed down.
Yeah. But they know, yeah, they know better than, there, there are connection, right? There are liaison, so to speak, so.
There's been some environmental ones that we've talked to them about before that, you know, we could bring up again, like the, uh, the expansion of the bottle bill, which, you know, I, I think, I think should be, you know, and that seems to almost, you know, be that one of the last things they remove from an environmental bill these days is, but they still do, they still do remove it.
Yeah, that and the NIPS was the other one.
The NIPS, and maybe statewide plastic bag, you know, some of those things.
The NIPS, the, the NIPS thing failed and never came back, is that right? That's off the, they're not talking about that anymore.
Yeah, we can ask them about it. I mean, there might be something like, somewhere they could put that in somewhere.
Okay, I'll mention it in the letter I sent to them. Sure. Okay.
Does anybody have anything else that they wanna add to the list?
I think I'd probably add more value the next time we do this, now that I kind of understand a little bit better, and I probably should have asked you earlier as to. But, but I think, you know, just in general, I, you know, we only get to see them a couple of times to kind of voice, these are the things that we'd like to see, or answers questions that we'd like to have answered, and, and, you know, unfortunately, the, you know, the stuff that's on the top of my mind at the moment is gonna be, you know, like in any revenue or, or cost issues. You know, we, we know at some point trickle down's gonna happen. Money's gonna go away in places, so.
Well, they've all made it clear that we can feel free to contact them on our own at any time.
I understand that.
Well, I think the issues change every year. Like last year, all of our, a lot of our conversation with them was around housing, because we had the ADU thing coming in, and we had, you know, so it's, it depends what's, what's the issue of the moment, right? So I, it's just not a really busy time right now. There isn't a lot.
See, I think housing is an issue that's gonna be around for a while, I think.
Yes.
You know, for us, sewer and water is gonna come around for a while. I think that's a problem for the whole state, not just Chelmsford. You know, this idea of MWA for us is not just Chelmsford. Other cities and towns are gonna get there, so.
Yeah, can we?
I just don't know if this is the, kind of the appropriate, um, forum for it, cause I don't know enough about the empowerment act, so.
Well, I mean, it doesn't have to do with that. Paul just brought that in because that was something that we thought.
Anything.
It was, it was critical that we did let them know, and, and we can also always write them a letter about something. You know, we did, we did one for the ADUs. We did a.
Right, right.
I thought it was a strong letter regarding that when that first came up. So if there's something that's gonna really impact us.
But I wonder if, since we are looking into the MWA stuff, I wonder if we could ask them if they have any update? Because I remember last year, part of the conversation was, where did they try to do it on the South Shore?
Yes, Speaker of the House tried to do it on the South Shore.
And they had trouble.
Didn't make it through conference committee, yeah.
Yeah, so I wonder if we can.
You can ask them what, what they are with MWA expansion. You can ask them.
Yeah, we just don't want them here for two hours.
I mean, it's on our, it's on our goal list, you know what I mean? So we might as well, I feel like we might as well, while we have them here, see if they have anything to say on the subject, maybe? It's kind of aligning with our.
Okay.
With our goals. Anybody have anything else? Not a bad list now, actually. We threw some. Okay, uh, if we have nothing else on that subject, we can, we can move on to the town manager bid awards.
Yeah, just one item this evening. This is the DPW various parking lot improvement projects. The estimated cost was seven hundred and sixty seven thousand dollars. This has to do with the, um, police department parking lot, the Adams Library parking lot, a portion of the Forum parking lot, and the addition of a new parking area in front of the McCarthy School, adding forty three parking spaces. We want to get this done by summer, late summer, early fall. Four bids were received. Uh, the lowest responsive and responsible bidder was Nocella Land Scaping and Paving out of Woburn, Mass. And the bid amount price was seven hundred thousand, seven hundred and fifty five dollars. So again, I'm seeking your confirmation. As you can see, and this is, this is the stuff that is crazy. I mean, look, you've got, that's the lowest bid. You had one that was ten percent higher at seven seventy seven, and then you had one that was a hundred percent higher.
The prices, the differences are so wild.
And, you know, so obviously this is good. It came within our budget, but this is, you know, this is the, the market that's out there. It's frightening.
Numbers like that.
It, but a lot of them are like that. Like the, the gap is so wide. It's always shocking to me. Like, how can they, I mean, costs are costs, right? And profit margins are profit margins.
Tend to try to take a big swing over nobody else's.
Exactly, yeah.
Really do. We live it every day.
Yeah, exactly, yeah.
And these are, it's the lowest qualifying bidder. It's not the lowest cost.
Right, and this is why we, but this is also why we want to bid early. So when you hear us talking about, we want to build the, bid the elevator early, want to bid the roof product early. Because you want to get people while they're lining up for it, cause if you come in late and then people have their work, then you're at the, a higher risk of getting these.
Then they don't need the money as that, so they.
Do this job. I'm gonna make sure.
I wanna make sure it's my while, yeah.
Yeah.
Not to narrow, but just have, have we ever gotten bids that we just said are too wild to do this project and we pass altogether?
Yeah, they don't come, they don't come to you, yeah.
Or like, we only have one bidder?
Yeah, well, unfortunately, there have been cases like school bus contracts and other stuff where you only get one bidder. You know, because that's all the market, and they.
We had the same problem with elevators and some of the school projects way back when.
Yeah.
Um, so, yeah, it's, uh, yeah, it's a problem.
So where's the new parking area at McCarthy School?
If, if, if you go to the front entrance, they'll, they'll basically cut into the berm there. That's where they would put it. They would add some spaces in the front of McCarthy. So that's, that's how they would add additional parking spaces.
Probably be at center over there.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay. And, and they, they really do need that.
Oh, yeah, Dr. Lang's behind this, isn't, you know, he's been asking us for some time, can we get this done?
Any additional parade space is gonna make me happy.
They're gonna do it like they did it at center, where it's like another little U?
Yeah.
Oh, that's interesting. Well, yeah, they have all that lawn there. It's kind of.
Yeah.
But the lawn's kind of nice.
Anything that helps with the parking and the traffic flow up there.
Yeah. Um, okay, if, does anybody else have questions? And we are gonna vote to approve these, right?
Yeah.
So I'll take a, I'll take a motion for this.
Yeah, I'll make a motion that this board approved DPW bid award recommendations for various parking lot improvement projects as presented.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great. Next up, we have town manager reports.
Yeah, thank you. Just three items this evening under my report. The first one pertains to the East Chelmsford Water District meeting regarding water district consolidation. I happened to notice in the posting board that the East Water District posted a meeting, and I think I sent out a notice to you saying that, you know, they're posting a meeting on, on discussions on that.
At eight AM.
Yeah, at eight AM.
That's one they always meet.
That's, that's traditional meeting time.
Yeah.
Yeah. Um, because it doesn't conflict with any of their work times, cause I don't think any of them are in, are at the age where they still work. And the, so I, I attended the meeting. I was glad I did. Um, I think they were glad that I did. The purpose of their meeting was they invited their legal counsel, which coincidentally is the same legal counsel for the Drakehead Water District. And Drakehead, like Chelmsford, has multiple water districts, although they only have two. They have the Kenwood Water District, which is private, meaning non-governmental. Uh, municipal, but not, not the town of Chelmsford, of Drakehead. And then they have the town of Drakehead Water District. And so they were there, so they were familiar with the idea of multiple water districts in a community. Um, and they, they actually conveyed that the Kenwood Water District was kind of looking to buy water from the Drakehead Water District and was kind of looking to get out from under the operations. Um, and again, there were some issues in that community, but more importantly here, they, I, I explained to them, the, the idea was what the, you know, the, the East Chelmsford Water District Board of Commissioners is looking at the PFAS solution. And at this point, they have a proposal into DEP for a four million dollar treatment system. And then their other alternative is to purchase water from the Lowell Waste, Lowell Water Utility, which is basically the water that serves the city of Lowell. They have an interconnection to the city of Lowell, as well as an interconnection to the Chelmsford Water District. Because DEP requires water districts to have interconnections for obviously emergency and other purposes. And so they were looking at, well, what's the, what's the lower cost for their water takers of how to provide, you know, potable drinking water? Uh, and so what I said to them was, well, shouldn't you be looking at a third option, which is consolidation of the districts? Because if your concern is the lowest cost, you haven't exhausted all the options, because we have a precedent in the community when there was a South Chelmsford Water District, and they decided that it was beneficial for them to be consolidated into the Chelmsford Water District. And that happened in nineteen eighty four. So they basically, yeah, that would be helpful, but they basically much, nobody, nobody wants to do the study. Meaning nobody wants to fund the study. And they kind of said, well, if you get some information on that, share it back with us. And I think that's the, a concern that I have is, you know, I've had discussions with Chelmsford Water District. I've had concerns now twice with the East Chelmsford Water District. I think they understand that the town is not interested in taking over, i.e. municipizing, meaning the town taking over the water districts. But yet there's, there's no initiative on their part to look at consolidation. Uh, and so I think that's sort of where we're at at this point is, you know, what do we do? If we do nothing, um, the, the concern I have for East Chelmsford Water District is they only have about seven hundred and sixty five accounts. Uh, and they don't know what funding they're going to receive. It, it, you know, even if it's at zero percent interest or some grant funding from the state, it's not only the purchase and installation of the treatment system, you also have to operate that treatment system for PFAS. And obviously, this is extraordinary, uh, in, in terms of, you know, this PFAS issue didn't exist ten years ago. It's, and I think there's been anything unlike it. So that was, so hey, we left it was, you know, I, I thanked them for their time. They thanked me for coming, and, and I told them that I'd report back to this board, that, that, that the board, meaning you, had not made any decision on whether the town was even gonna venture into this or not, but I just told them that I would inform you, and I know we adopted a goal earlier this evening about looking into this. So I guess at this point in time, I'm sort of at, looking for your direction in terms of whether and how to proceed. Because what we do know is Chelmsford Water District is exploring a forty million dollar project. We granted them the easement, you remember, to convey water from across the school property at the school admin building and, and at McCarthy. So they can move their water for flow. We know the North Chelmsford Water District is looking into some kind of a pilot program for PFAS. And then now we know, and we know obviously that East Chelmsford is looking into, um, the PFAS solution available to them. But as I pointed out to them, and I'll point out to you, it's been thirty five years since the issue of consolidation has been examined. And I guess the only reason I raise it is I'm not interested in taking over the water districts. In fact, before this issue ever gets resolved, you know, the, many of us will not, including myself, will probably no longer be sitting at this table, because it's not an issue that you do in six months or even a year. But I guess the question I have in terms of the ratepayers and water takers of Chelmsford is, you know, should it be looked into? And what's going to best serve them in the, in the long term? And so that's why I've been, you know, placed this on the agenda and been exploring this issue is, is, is my genuine concern. And I would, and I would apply it to anything we do. And that's what we're kind of, that's in the context of this, is if somebody came to me today, if the city of Lowell came to Chelmsford today and said, look, we think we could provide a solution to your sewer capacity issues, and that we could do it as a sewer district that went beyond the town borders, I think we would sit there and say, yeah, let's look at it. I guess what's frustrating to me is, you know, and I said this to the East Commissioners, I said, please, don't listen to rumors, particularly by those who have a vested interest in the outcome of this, meaning people who are employed by water districts and so forth. But I said, so please come to me if you hear any concerns. I said, look, we are not gonna, there's been no legislation filed. I said, if legislation were filed, it doesn't move quickly. We know the legislature doesn't move quickly. And we know that any legislation that would be filed, cause that's how it would change, it would have to take an act of the state legislature, that obviously there'd be solicitation of input, you know, from the community, from the district ratepayers. So I said, there's nothing sinister here or something that's gonna be done in the dark of night. But I guess the question I have, and I have had, is, you know, is this something that, that we, we want to further pursue? Or is it just something saying, hey, Paul, you, you did your part, and thank you very much, and, you know, we got enough else on our plate, let's, let's move on? So I guess that's where I'm at, at this point, at the beginning of June.
I thought at our last meeting with the legislator, the legislators, that they were gonna look into, um, what has been done and what can be done. Did anything ever come of that? I thought it was.
I, I've never heard anything from the legislative delegation. I'm not aware that they're doing anything with this. My experience over the years, even, even with the Congresswoman's office in terms of looking for sewer capacity is they hear you, and then they've heard you. Uh, and I don't think that there's any readily, readily available solution. You know, and so I just don't, I don't have any, any, any response or feedback or any inclination that the delegation is going to take this on. Because I think if they were, it would be a, it would be a statewide issue. They would be, and this is something that's a little bit disappointing, is that the state keeps, you know, pushing some of the issues in terms of consolidation, particularly of school districts in the western part of the state and, and so forth, and providing incentives for regional dispatch. Um, but yet there is no, we don't see any concerted effort. And I did reach out to the mass DEP, uh, and he's telling me that, don't expect, that, he's not aware of any action by the state to incentivize or fund analysis in terms of, you know, consolidation of this. And as I pointed out to the East Chelmsford Water District, you know, somehow we're, 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 we're served by, and you may like them or not like them, but we're served by utilities such as National Grid and, and, you know, gas and electric that go beyond the town boundaries. And I said, here, we have a housing authority that serves the entire town. We have a fire department that serves the entire town. And we have, we have a townwide sewer system. I don't know why it's such a difficult question to say, you know, should the town, meaning be better served either by a consolidation of districts? And I said, basically, if you did the study, you would go wherever the study took you. But at this point, I'm not seeing any enthusiasm for anybody to, meaning the districts, to take on the study.
So is that because the process is, like, what is, what is the process to get approval from the state legislator? And who, who would, would the town look for approval from the state legislator to consolidate the districts?
The districts could do it on their own. They don't need the town to do it.
Is it an application?
Yeah, it's filing of legislation, probably through a, in their case, a district vote.
And they, but they would do it.
Yeah, they could do it. Yeah, they don't need the town. And, and I'm saying.
But could the town do it without them?
Theoretically, yeah, theoretically. I mean, for example, everything is public record, right? We could hire a consultant who could just do a public records inquiry in terms of, show us your plans for PFAS treatment. What have you submitted for grant applications? It's all there. And then you could then go beyond that and say, okay, what, what, give us the public records of the investment that you've made in your infrastructure in the last ten years, right? And say, okay, what, you know, what are you doing in terms of replacing your, your, your water mains, you know, and so forth? And then they could come back with a report, I'm sure. But again, you, you don't want to do it in, you know, in.
In a confrontational.
In a confrontational manner, but that's what that would be. Public records inquiry would be a confrontational manner.
Yeah. And that was what we would do if we were going to pursue approval by the state.
And what, what concerns me is we have an interrelationship with them in terms of DPW. And I, you know, I can tell you that there are sometimes eyebrows raised at, by DPW in terms of, you know, what, what's.
Operations.
What's being done and not being done out there in terms of operational stuff. And I'm not, I'm not criticizing or faulting anybody. It's just. It just, you know, I'm sure there are eyebrows raised by some of the stuff the town does, I'm sure. But the, but my point is, is if there are issues, you, you know, and I said to them, I said, if it comes to the point where you, as East Chelmsford Water District, were to buy your water supply from the city of Lowell, then what's the point of the district? Other than you're a water, you're a water conduit. And then maybe you'll still maintain and flush and, and replace your lines. But you're now going to be, you know, basically at the discretion or whatever charge the city of Lowell wants to put on for a surcharge to provide you with water beyond their normal, the water utility and Lowell provides beyond their cost.
So you're losing money. And then the residents are therefore also losing money.
And the problem, and the problem that I've had with the discussion with the Chelmsford Water District was, well, yeah, we, we'd be willing as a good steward to look in at the East Chelmsford Water District. But one is, we don't know what we don't know. And so that, and therefore, they, everybody's protecting their own subpocket of ratepayers, right? You know, water taker payers in this case. You know, in other words, the residents in, and the water takers in the Chelmsford Water District don't want to take on a financial burden that they may not know if they were to take on the East District. And then vice versa. East looking at it like, well, we want to provide the lowest cost for our ratepayers. So we're, we're concerned about change and the unknown as well. And you can just see it's just going nowhere. And, yeah.
So our responsibility for this board is to the entire town, not to each of the individual districts and ratepayers, right?
Oh, they may say, you have no responsibility to the water takers. Technically, that's, that's their sort of pushback, is that it's not your domain.
Yeah, but the disparities that exist are ridiculous, and they're only going to get worse, the longer we let this go.
We also are their water takers.
But I'm just trying to tell you the, the other side of, how they're pushing back.
So I understand that. But I also, I also think, right, that, that we need to, it, it seems like there's maybe a little concern about, you know, what the impact would be. And, and nobody wants to take on the project of the funding individually to go do that. So I, you know, I, I would think the responsible thing to do in a collaborative, not a combative by any stretch of the imagination, collaborative process would be to, to put forward this idea of doing this in a more formal fashion. You know, this is how, we come up with something on how we can, we can help support it, to at least get these studies done, to see what it will cost. Because I tell you what, all of a sudden, I'm paying part of $40 million in center, and East can't afford to put a PFAS system in. So now they have no PFAS protection. And then North comes up with something different. That, to me, just sounds like everybody pays more to, to get clean drinking water. And, and I just don't, I feel more of a responsibility to not take over, but support, at least seeing what it would be to consolidate. And what are the benefits? What are the cons? What are the unintended consequences we could expect from that? I just don't know how we'd go about doing that. But I think, I feel a responsibility to the 36,000 people that live here to, to support and answer.
I'm not sure you can do this without getting confrontational, quite honestly, because everybody's going to be protecting their ground. And, you know, I mean, if you, if you speak of nothing but freedom of information, you know, that's the most important thing that we all need, you know, to see where they've been, where they're coming from, where they're going. And nobody's going to be free with that information, you know, upfront. So, and I'm not saying we have to be, you know, nasty about it. Nothing needs to be nasty. But, but there's going to be pushback. And, and, and I think the town needs to take on the burden of, you know, forming a committee and getting a consultant to do just that, and look at, you know, different remedial situations down the road. You know, the disparity only gets worse the longer we sit on our hands and do nothing. I mean, it really, you know, because everybody's going to be paying different rates. And, and, you know, one part of town might have good drinking water, and another part of town may not. And, you know, they may be paying more or what have you. You know, one town here, you know. I, I just think that we need to start looking at that. I think if you put the information out, and there's a lot of very smart people in town that could go uncover this kind of information. We would need some assistance with some, you know, budgetary assistance for a consultant or two. But, but I don't see this going any other way. It's, it's not going to happen by having nice congenial conversations. I just don't see that happening because nobody wants it, at least from their perspective. And I'm not sure that the, the water takers and the taxpayers understand the, the depth of where we are in town right now when it comes to water. And, and I just believe we're derelict in our responsibilities, and I've said this before, by not tackling this. I, I just really feel like we need to come up with a solution. And, you know, maybe it's not this board, but it's this board's initiation of some action to start driving it in the right direction. And that's my two cents on it.
A decade ago, Pat knows this, Pat was, there used to be joint water district meetings, you know, you know, where the Chelmsford Water District would have a quarterly meeting with the East and, 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 and North. That hasn't occurred in 10 years, because they can't, you know,
Should we try and coordinate?
Get together. So, no, it just hasn't happened, you know. But I guess the question is, is before we embark in this, should we invite, you know, the three, you know, the three districts to come sit with us and have a discussion on this? Just, you know, to hear from them directly in terms of, I, I don't know. I don't, you know, I'm saying, I don't want to be confrontational, but...
I think that's an excellent idea, because let's get everybody on the same page.
Let's get everybody, ask them to come.
And I think, you know, I, I guess I would be hesitant, given the financial situation we're in, to, to start a study like this, which is not going to be inexpensive.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
And I think we have to be cognizant of that. But if we could get some, you know, not even buy-in, but just, you know, a few nods of the head from a commissioner or two that said, well, you know, maybe we can do some kind of, you know, joint report or whatever, and see where it leads to. I mean, maybe they'd all say no, but you never know. I mean, maybe...
I would love to hear their feedback, because it doesn't sound like they're adamantly opposed, like, it doesn't sound like East is saying, absolutely not, you know. It's, I think there might be some, there might be some wiggle room here for some...
Well, to Pat's point, I think if we, if we, you know, ask them to come sit with us, might bring some awareness to the water takers. I don't think a lot of them realize how many different districts there are in town, because I get my water bill, I pay it, and I don't think twice about it. And it would only take until this person says, oh, well, you're paying this. Well, I'm only paying that. I mean, I don't think that's going to happen on its own. And so if we take the action of having some kind of joint meeting and getting the awareness out there, I think that'd be beneficial.
It has to start someplace.
I, I think...
But I think that's a good starting.
Right. Because I think that's the, the non-confrontational approach. Like, let's have the discussion and put it together. And, and at least get everybody's feedback during and post-meeting. But, you know, to Pat's point, right, none of this stuff is free. It's not going to be easy or inexpensive to get the answers. But I, but here's what I know is reality. PFAS is not going away. We're going to have to start treating it. People are going to have to start looking at the costs to go do that. And I don't want anybody going forward with any of those costs without getting some sort of input on, is there a way to consolidate these down? And again, I want to be very clear. I, I don't think that we have too much going on municipally to take these over. The sewer runs itself. I think the water can run itself. But again, as one, not, not as three. And I, again, I think you, we look at all the constituencies that are involved here. And I think everybody stands to benefit from, I think everybody would benefit from a consolidation, but I can't say that without data. So I think everybody would benefit from getting the data. And I think we need to move forward.
Yeah, so I'd like to hear from them, why, how they think they might benefit or not benefit, or what their concerns are over any of this conversation, you know.
But even to the point of, I don't mean to interrupt, but even to the point of understanding where they want to go down the road. Because, you know, I read stuff every day, and it's so conflicting in many cases, you know. So, you know, I'd like to make sure that all three of them are pointed in the right direction, so no one part of town gets the raw end of the stick, so to speak. Or, and not that anybody would do that intentionally, but people look at problems and solutions in a variety of manners. And I just think I'd like to understand what their approach is, and what, how they feel about PFAS. Is it controllable? Can we ever get clean drinking water here? Because I'm not convinced that we can. Which I hate to say that, but, you know, I just, some of the stuff that you read, and I'd really like to hear from the, the only experts we have in town right now are, are the three water commissioners. So I'd like to hear from them as to what they see the future is, you know, can this be cleaned up? Can you provide suitable drinking water 50 years from now for the town of Chelmsford? You know, because that's, that's where my line, I think, can goes. It's not, you know, five years from now or 10 years from now. It's, you know, 30, 40, 50 years. Oh, you know, what are we going to have here? You know? And that's where I, why I think we should be addressing this head on.
So how do we, so how, how can we attempt to do that?
I mean, I can extend an invitation to them to...
To the three of them and the whole select board? Or do we want to focus on center and east? Because that is...
I invite all three. I think you invite all three.
Don't break it up.
Yeah, you can't break it up. I think you invite all three. And then they, I mean, they can either send a member, or if they're going to come as a whole, they could...
Invite them into the select board meeting.
Yeah, yeah. I think that's, you know.
Publicize it.
Yeah, I think everything's going to be transparent and public.
I mean, you know, you might only, almost want to have a special meeting just for that.
Yeah, because it'll be several hours.
Yeah, and it will generate, I mean, and if it's publicized well enough, there'll, there'll be water takers that will come and give their viewpoint.
I think that's why you should go.
And that would almost be a good thing, because then they could actually hear
Yes.
what people don't understand. And maybe they'd be amazed at what people don't understand about how the districts work.
Yeah, yeah.
I guess the question is, when? Given that it's June 2nd today, like, when do we have such a meeting? And where?
Well, I think, I think we're going to invite with some things we'd like to have as agenda items, right? So we need to give them time to prepare too.
Right, exactly. So you're talking July, August? Like, what, what's?
I mean, the conversation isn't going anywhere fast, right?
Right, no.
I think July or August is appropriate.
Do we utilize a police training room? Do you think it would fit?
I think you can do it right here.
I mean, but then now this is summer, right?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, yeah.
Everybody's traveling. And summer's tough. So are we, yeah, are we pushing till September? I mean, then you're, we're three months out, yeah.
For having a separate meeting, it's...
Well, you know, given that they, they meet at, at most once a month, and East doesn't even meet, I don't think, that often. I think you, like you say, you do have to give them time to prepare. So I think if we said something for even July, they might say, well...
Too soon, yeah.
Yeah, too soon.
So maybe, maybe August or September is...
Yeah, I would be okay.
And August, everybody's away. That's the problem.
I would be okay with...
Oh, September, October.
Right. Like you said, it's not going anywhere, anywhere fast.
Yeah. Nobody's building a PFAS plan in the next, in the next two months, right? So like...
Well, but there's, there's appropriations. I mean, where's center at in their appropriation?
They've already issued a contract.
Yeah, they're, they're on their way.
Well, and yeah, I do want to get ahead of that, because, you know, if they are gonna, if they are gonna, if we are going to have conversations about what it looks like in 50 years, you want to...
I mean, it may...
They're building stuff that has the capacity to potentially...
Right. It's not going to be one, one flow, one system. You could have the different plants and, you know, but the whole idea of having consolidated oversight, you know, management and so forth.
Inefficiencies.
Yeah, inefficiencies, yeah.
So how do we do it? Is September too late, then? Do you think?
No, I don't think so. I, I don't think...
Early September, I think.
Yeah.
Well, the Labor Day's the first, so it's not going to be the first. And then we would meet the 8th. Do you want to do September 15th? Because, yeah, I mean, it's three months out. I mean, it should avoid conflicts, if you're doing it on a Monday night. Okay. All right, so do September 15th.
Yep, yeah.
And you, and do you think we can do it in here? Do it in this room?
Yeah, and we can just make sure that it has a Zoom component.
Okay.
So that people can join.
Because I know I'll be traveling on the 15th. I'll be on the west coast.
Okay, okay. All right, all right.
But if, if you were concerned about, you know, a meeting getting too crowded, I mean, the police station's fine, too.
But I think we would want to be live, if we could. And we can't...
The police station can't do live.
Can't do live.
Police station can't do live.
Right, so...
We can always go into the second room.
We'll just open up the other door.
Okay, all right. So we'll just do September.
But before we just move on to another subject, publicizing it is very important. Just getting the word out repeatedly. And I don't know how we do that, but...
Well, it's, you know, a lot of people read Tommy Anderson's newsletter, and, you know, if you have it on the, on the website, you know, it's a month in advance, people will have, you know, they'll still have an excuse, but they'll have no excuse.
Yeah, okay.
And, you know...
Well, and it's also just a conversation, right? You just want to get everybody...
Right, we're not going to make any decisions, for sure.
So, I mean...
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Next item I have is the subsidized housing inventory. As we mentioned a couple times throughout the meeting tonight, we, we did receive on, on a report dated May 22nd, the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities, Chapter 40B subsidized housing inventory. And they now list Chelmsford as 10.02%. So that means we have 1,472 units of subsidized housing inventory out of the 14,696 year-on housing units based on the 2020 census. So that basically, that basically means that now the Board of Appeals can declare safe harbor if somebody submits an application. The board has already done that, because on the Crosby Village, and I expect they're going to do it for the 243 River Neck as well. And, and again, but clearly, it's indisputable now with this document that, that we were at the 10%,. And as you can see, Aaron, on, you asked a question about, well, when, when units expire. The Meadows at Brick Hill on 82 Brick Hill Road is the only thing, you look in the column that says affordability expires, that's 2029. And, and I think we can continue to work with David Hettison to see if that can get changed, because obviously, that's a significant number of units. That's 180.
So how does it expire?
Because back, back in the early days, they used to do 30-year restrictions.
Oh, on the 40B? Oh, and that was one of the first ones. Oh.
Okay, so that's where we are on 40B.
And this just means that we can safe harbor out if there was a, if there was a 40B development that somebody wanted to bring forward that made total sense.
Right. You can still do it, yeah.
Still do it.
Because you're still going to build your stock of future.
It just gives you, it gives you, basically, prevents the undesirable or, or, you know. And then the last one, speaking of that, is we did, since our last meeting on May 19th, the Board of Appeals did hear, receive an application for a comprehensive permit at 243 River Neck Road. And that's been circulated to the committee, and they're, they're have to schedule a hearing within 30 days unless the applicant agrees differently. And I think they're trying to settle in on the date. Because typically, the Board of Appeals meets the first Thursday of every month. As we know, they're meeting this Thursday, you know, three nights from now to deal with the ledge road issue. But the first Thursday in July is July 3rd, so they're not going to be there. They're going to be July 10th. And so I think they're trying to, trying to schedule this for July 10th. To, you know, again, like they did with Crosby Village, to act upon it and ask the applicant if they want to proceed or, or not. So that concludes my report for this evening. I do, I do have two appointments this evening.
Okay, we have one first.
You have one first, yeah, exactly. Which is more important than any of the ones that I have.
Oh, yep. So first up under appointments, we have the select board appointment for Town Council.
Although it's, it's spelled differently than what it shows there.
Oh, C E L.
That Town Council is spelled C O U N S E L.
Yeah.
Did, did we decide on a one-year term?
No, we did not. I was going to mention that.
Yeah, we didn't decide on the term. So I think that...
That was, I don't know who put that.
I think that we can make the appointment tonight if we're all, we can, if we're all in agreement on the term. And I think last week, or two weeks ago, we talked about a two-year term possibly, I think, sounded like a reasonable...
I don't think we, I don't think we really discussed it. I'd prefer to see a three-year term, just knowing the turnover that's coming in town and such, so that we have some stability that way.
Yeah, I'd be okay with that.
You know, I think a three-year term is definitely appropriate. And they're always there for us in, in any capacity we've asked. And I just think at this, at this juncture, where the town will be going over the next three years, it's important to do a three-year term.
Yeah, I, I did an MMA meeting thing that they had, too, that KP Law was the presenter of it. And he's very comfortable with their knowledge and their discussion. And I wholeheartedly support the continuity piece at this point.
Well, I would say, one year, you're just kind of getting a feel for what you're doing. So second year, you start getting your teeth into it a little bit. And third year, you're kind of running with the information you have in front of you.
Yeah. I mean, I look at it in terms of, like, the kind of turnover that we're going to have in town over the next, you know, three, four, or five years. And I just think, you know, where you can build instability, it's important to build instability, you know.
And we won't have to do this again for three years.
Yes.
Be like that, too.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay, well, with that, I guess I'll, I'll take a motion.
Okay. I will, uh, make a motion that this board approves as town council, um, KP Law, uh, for a term of three years, expiring June 30th, 2028.
I'll second that.
Okay, I've got a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Wonderful. Next up, we have town manager appointments.
I have two appointments this evening. One is for the Conservation Commission's the first one. Um, there's a three-year term expiring June 30th, 2028. Um, I had four applicants for this position. Um, two of them who I'm familiar with, uh, and two of which I was not familiar with, so I interviewed the two people that I was not familiar with. Um, I'm pleased to present to you for confirmation Alexandra Hayden for the Conservation Commission. Um, I don't know Ellie that well. She was recently employed in the Clerk's office. Um, I was surprised when I saw her application. Um, but myself and David Kuntz interviewed her, as well as another applicant for the position that I did not know as well. The other two were Charlie Wojcicki, who I knew well, and Henry Parley, who I know well, so I didn't need to interview those two. I think we all know that those two individuals and their contributions to the community over the years. But I, as, as a philosophy, I know we're trying to bring in new people to get them involved in the government. Um, my position with, uh, an employee, you know, serving on a commission, I think we have precedent for that. I mean, certainly your predecessor, Harris and Mayotte, served on the Board of Assessors, and as you know, in the school district, we, we, you know, we have our town finance director who serves on the planning board, uh, and so forth. But my feeling in this is, I don't think that employment by the town should disqualify somebody from s, serving on a town board. It doesn't qualify you from serving as a town meeting rep. Um, when, when I looked at their backgrounds and interviews, and how I thought, you know, they, the town would be best served, I, I and David Kuntz, who, who accompanied me, our conservation in the interviews, both agree that Ellie Hayden would, would be best serve the community in terms of her background, her, her passion and her commitment to the, to the position. Um, and so I'm seeking your confirmation of that appointment for a three-year period going forward. Um, I held off on this a little bit, because we are, as the board knows, and the public may know, your next meeting, you're gonna have the annual appointments. And so I wanted to see what the status was of the commission coming up, but it appears that our current conservation chair will be, uh, has, has indicated his willingness to continue to serve, interesting serving. I intend to reappoint Carl Bischoff, uh, to the commission, and so I wanted to look at this in the, in lights of the configuration, the entire commission. Um, so with that, um, I think, I'm seeking your confirmation, I think, for the appointment of Ellie Hayden to this position. Um, I, like I said, I don't know her that well, but what I am impressed by is, you know, when I talk to her work colleagues, but, but more importantly, I just, I just think that, you know, she, she will, um, serve this town well and can provide, uh, some of her back, background in legal interest, uh, to this position and the community. And also, I, I did check with, um, Chief Spence, who would, who worked, who knows her as well professionally, and, you know, he, he speaks very highly of her as well. So, um, I, I think the town's gonna be well-served with, with her presence on the commission.
Questions? I'm sorry? Oh, I'll take a motion.
I'll make a motion that this board approves, um, the town manager's selection of Alexandra Hayden, um, for a three-year term for the Conservation Commission, expiring June 30th, 2028.
I'll second that.
Motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Wonderful.
And then for the Recycling Committee, Gina Lannan, um, is, is, would be appointed for the same thing, uh, unexpired term in this case, basically going for another year on the Recycling Committee. Um, and again, she's looking to get involved in the community. She, um, you know, in, in her sort of couple of letters that she wants to get involved, and she thought this would be a good place to start and get to understand how the town works and, and, and her interest in recycling. So I'm seeking your confirmation for her appointment to the, to the Recycling Committee.
Questions?
I certainly support it, because that was my gateway committee.
Really?
[laughing]
All right, I'll take a motion.
Okay, I'll make a motion that this board accept and approve the, um, appointment of Gina Lannan, um, to the Recycling Committee for an unexpired three-year term, expiring June 30th. Is it 2026?
26, yeah.
2026.
I'll second that.
I've got a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, next up, we have meeting minutes. I have some minutes from May 12th. And May 19th. Does anyone have any comments on May 12th corrections? Not, nothing?
Nope, we look okay.
Be eagle-eyed. Okay. Um, if nobody has anything, I'll take a motion for the May 12th minutes.
Do you vote at once, or?
Sure. Nobody has anything on the 19th either? Okay, yep.
Okay, uh, I'll make a motion that this board accepts the meeting minutes of May 12th, 2025, and the meeting minutes of May 19th, 2025, as, um, as presented and drafted.
I'll second that.
A motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Wonderful. Okay, next up, we have, um, select board liaison reports and referrals. So I guess we'll start with Pat. Do you have any?
Okay. Um, yeah, just a couple of things. Um, a little over a week ago, a longtime member of the community, Eugene Gillette, passed away. He was very active, especially in North Chelmsford, but he also so, served 32 years on the planning board. I didn't, I did not know he had served that long. That's a, that's quite an accomplishment. Um, so condolences to, to his family. Uh, yesterday, Neshoba Technical High School had their graduation, so congratulations to all the, all the seniors who are on to the next, uh, chapter in their lives from Neshoba. Um, yesterday, uh, Erin and Paul Cohen and I were at the dedication at Sunny Meadow Farm for, um, a memorial for Richard St. Orange, who was a Westford firefighter, who was killed, um, performing a mutual aid, um, in 1970 at, at Sunny Meadow at a, at a barn fire. Uh, there's a very impressive sculpture there that shows, uh, his jacket, firefighter St. Orange's jacket and helmet on a granite bench. It's, it's very impressive. You stop and, and look at it at some point. And lastly, this afternoon, earlier today, there was a ribbon cutting at Hair Space Salon in Central Square. All your hair needs, you can have them all taken care of right there.
Is that Brendan, is that, his name's Brendan or Brandon?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, he's a nice guy.
Yeah.
He cut my hair like a year or two ago, and he was telling me he was looking for a space.
He found one.
Mm, that's all I thought, so, thanks. Pat?
I have nothing this evening. Thanks.
Jeff?
Yeah, well, I'll start with my favorite committee, and since the cemetery already left, I'm not offending anybody. Um, I'm sure by now, most of you have seen the banners up, which I think look fantastic. And, um, you know, kudos to Paige Gillette, Jean's granddaughter, and his legacy will live on. Pat, you kind of beat me to the punch on that one. Um, you know, it's not easy. We gotta come up with two diff, two new designs every year, and, and Paige and her team always give us nice options, and I think this year they knocked it out of the park. Um, the other thing I'll touch base on is the Conservation Commission. I was out of town at, during their last meeting, but I did go online and watch it the next day. And then, um, I've also had some correspondence with Carl Bischoff, and, um, I had a chance to go back and watch Mike Raesback's presentation of the Coolest Farm Task Force, I guess that was. And one thing he emphasized, besides going through all the possibilities for that property, he said, "None of this can be forwarded until we go through the pros, the proper process," which, you know, with this Warren article, we're gonna begin that. And, um, I know there's been a lot of chatter around this, and I think it would be inappropriate for this board to try to move that in, in, they're doing exactly what we do with Warren Poll, correct? Um, and that, you know, anything that, anytime you go to the state, and people don't know this, the reason we have to go to the state is because we use Community Preservation Fund, which is partially funded by the state. And anytime you use state money for anything, you have to have an accountability for it. So, and in order to do that properly, we have to send in the application for the preservation and, um, wait to hear back from them. And we can't move on anything over there until we get that done. So to do anything before that would be completely out of line. And so I think the commissions, they, they've told me they have a plan, and they're gonna reveal it when the time, when the point, when the time is right. But as Mr. Raesback said, you can't do anything until we go through the proper channels. And people need to realize that. Take a breath and understand that the state doesn't move fast on anything, and that's just the way it is. You know, so to come into this board and kind of, I hate to use the word demand, but to ask us to overstep conservation, I think is completely inappropriate. That's about it.
Thanks. Aaron?
All right, um, I can be pretty quick tonight. Um, we, uh, there was a planning board meeting. They had a couple of, uh, things on their agenda. There was an administrative review for the old Westford Road project that, uh, that got deferred. Um, and they continue to do work and, and wrap up their zoning work related to Kate's Corner. Um, and, uh, and then Paul, myself, and Badri had an opportunity to, um, have a lengthy and, um, critical discussion around the, the managed growth strategy that the, the Strategic Plan Committee, um, you know, asked the planning board to step in and lead, um, especially with their kind of involvement and management of the master plan, uh, from 2020, that, you know, s, some of that managed growth strategy is gonna come out. So that, that was a pretty lengthy meeting, and we had a lot of time and, and got to discuss a lot of important things. And, um, and the, the planning board is, is gonna move forward with that. They're working on some grant money that's gonna help with, um, some studies, um, uh, related to that. So that, that's a to be continued. Um, and then they are, you know, in parallel to all of that, um, I think, working diligently on some fall zoning, um, articles where we see a lot of that stuff come up anyways, because it's past spring. So I definitely encourage folks to participate in those planning board meetings, ask questions, um, watch them online, um, because they're an extremely busy group, and that they're working pretty diligently, um, every day and between every meeting to, um, ensure that, that zoning is, is meeting the needs. So, um, the other one I get to do is one of my morning ones, um, the Age Friendly Implementation Committee. Um, and Deb and Fred and the rest of the team are, uh, there's a, I mean, I love when I get on, I see the chief is there too, so, um, there's a lot, there's a lot going on. I'm excited that they're continuing to work to align their strategic plan to the town's strategic plan. And again, the, the age friendly and, and the, um, and, and all the folks working up at the senior center are, are doing really, uh, a great job. And then I didn't get to attend the finance, um, committee meeting. I, I let Jim know, um, but you guys already know the results of all of that, um, tonight. I was at a very important, um, rugby playoff game for Chelmsford High School Rugby, um, that I had to attend. Um, so I appreciate Jim giving me a pass on that, and, uh, Paul reporting out tonight on the results of that. So, that's all I got.
Okay, thanks. Um, and all I had was a reminder about the ZBA meeting that we already discussed, um, on Thursday night this week, to discuss ledge road. Um, and it is at the police station in the training room, right? Um, and that's it. That's all I have. So if nobody has anything else, I'll take a motion.
Motion to adjourn.
I'll second it.
Thanks. We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.